Use the gavel, so I'm gonna do it. Okay, we're gonna call the order. We have a quorum. Roll call, Gail, please.
Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Proton Wyrick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz. Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Good, thank you. And thank you, Bill. Mayor Proton Bill, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Sure. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Bill. And before we move on to Greg's presentation, I just want to say a couple of things. I want to say a big thank you to James and staff and all the volunteers who have worked so many long hours and care so deeply about our community. It's really an amazing event to be involved in because it's really this spirit of democracy at work. And to have so many people interested in what's happening is an incredible experience. The other thing I want to say, it's, of course, we know that it's not if, it's how. Because we all know that we have to decrease our carbon footprint and that biking and walking and getting out of the cars and cutting down commuting is something that everybody on the planet needs to do. So, great way to start. Of course, it's a work in progress. And the entire planet is involved in this, and we're involved in this, and all the communities on the planet are involved. So it's really exciting to build a healthier and safer community for our children. And to quote Voltaire, "The best is the enemy of the good." So let's keep that in mind. What is the good here? And we can make it better. Also, to quote Shakespeare, "Brevity is the soul of wit; the essence of intelligence is brevity." So we have a two-minute limit. You don't have to use all two minutes. Gail, Gail the muter will mute you at two minutes. So everyone, please keep that in mind, just so we can get through it. Also a reminder, this is about civil discourse. So it's, it's good to disagree. It's okay to disagree. We must, though, accept everyone's opinion here. And that is the beauty of democracy. We're on the same team, and that's Team Ojai. And we all know that we want it to be the best community possible. We're gonna do a stretch bathroom nutrition, nutrition break, about every hour and a half to keep it healthy. And so just keep that in mind. And to quote John Madden, "Things turn out the best for the people who make the best of the way things turn out." So on that note, I'm gonna hand it off to Greg Grant. And Greg, thank you so much for all the work you've done on this. Take it away.
And Madam Mayor, before our staff starts, we will need a formal approval of the agenda.
Oh, yes, we do. I'm so excited about democracy. Okay, so could we approve the agenda?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, Gail, may we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Blatz? I can't hear you, but...
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Haney? Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. And thank you, Matt, for reminding me. Okay, Greg?
And I, if I could start, I want to give just a brief introduction, and then I'll hand it off to Greg. I just, Greg is gonna get into some detail, and I want to just give a very brief, kind of big-picture summary. Just for, you know, for everybody, this has been a very long, ongoing project. It stems back to 2015. So just to kind of get everybody up to speed quickly. This project is the Active Transportation Program project, which is intended to result in improvements to all modes of transportation, including driving, walking, and bicycling by calming traffic and providing delineators, paint, and other features to provide improved spacing between those things. The overall project was initiated by a grant application from the city in 2015. But the actual Maricopa Highway Demonstration Project, which I will discuss tonight, was requested in December 2018 to allow a test period before permanent changes would be implemented. The city received a $430,000 grant for that demonstration project in April of 2019. The project was originally planned to be a six-month demonstration to allow for feedback from the community and for the city to consider potential modifications. That has now been planned to, to extend longer than six months to allow for overlap with the return of the students to Noroff High School. You know, obviously, that was one of the impacts from the pandemic. So we were planning to extend it longer than six months to allow for that. These grant funds and the grant funds for the permanent project can only be used to support pedestrian and bicycle improvements or traffic calming as part of the ATP, ATP project and cannot be used for other city projects. The project, the demonstration project was launched on December 7th, a little over two months ago. And the staff report and presentation tonight will include some of the data results from the survey and other trends we've seen since that time. There are two main purposes of tonight's meeting. One is to allow the public to provide feedback to the, the city and the city council. The other is to allow city council to discuss whether modifications are desired at this time. The staff presentation, which will be presented by Public Works Director Greg Grant, also includes some recommended modifications that we are making based on the feedback and the results at this time. As you mentioned, we expect, we've received a lot of feedback. We expect to have about 100 speakers tonight. We also received 200 written comments that have been distributed to the city council. And just before the meeting, we received a petition of 72 signatures from the St. Maricopa Highway Group to ensure that everyone has time to speak with all of those opinions and, and all the feedback. We, we did discuss potentially, or, you know, reducing the amount of time for response, but we'll get to that after the presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to Public Works Director Greg Grant for more information.
Good evening, council and mayor. And I did, I appreciate the introduction. And we do have our consultant, who is the lead on this project, the demonstration portion, Tony Garcia with Street Plans. And he is on the line. There he is. And so Tony's gonna take the first review of the demonstration project before I get into some of the modifications that are recommended. Take it away, Tony. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you, Greg. Thanks, James. Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for having me here. I'm gonna try to make this as concise as I can. You know, it's only been a year, actually, since we've been working on this demonstration. We, we started in, in March. I know that, that you all have been working on this project for many years before. And there's just a lot of energy. And, and I think it's come to this. This is, this is the moment I think a lot of folks have been waiting for, where, where, you know, the, the proof meets the, the reality on the ground. We've been talking about drawings up to now, and now we have something real. So I wanted to go through just a little bit about what QuickBuild is, what is a demonstration project, and then get into the project and the results of the project so far. So just, some of this is a review, but I think for you, Madam Mayor, that some of this is, is new. We do this work all around the country and, and in fact, have written numerous publications. And really, it's, it's, you know, a big part of my life is just doing these types of projects all around the country. And I can tell you, you're, you're on pace. This is already showing and proving the concept and revealing things that can help with the, the final version. So I'm gonna get into that a little bit more. But the, we do these projects is exactly that, to really try to test using temporary materials a plan that might be controversial. So oftentimes, these, these plans are not controversial. It's just about getting something in the ground, expediting the delivery of public benefits. And that is certainly something that's important to me. I've been doing this already for 20 years. And I don't want to have to wait until I'm older to see infrastructure in the ground. As you all know, a lot of this infrastructure does take many, many years. And, and as the mayor just said, there is an urgency to our climate challenge that has to be solved now. We can't wait for us to figure all of this out in a perfect way. And this is a great methodology to try to advance those goals. And, and something that I love to go back to over and over, you know, we're planners, we're human architects and engineers. We often impose a sort of order on the work that we're doing. But one of the reasons that we do this type of work, demonstration projects and QuickBuild projects, is to see how to use, let's compare what, what the actual build reality is to what the design is and try to reconcile those two and learn from how people actually use the infrastructure. We often say, we like to break down project delivery into much smaller increments. Too often, all of our projects, our infrastructure projects, jump right into permanent design. When, you know, you spend millions of dollars and years and years planning something, only to realize once it's built that it didn't really work the way that we thought it should work. So this methodology allows us to break that down into smaller increments and see what works, prototype different elements of designs, and fix things before you get to the final design. And so we'll talk about this, and Greg is gonna jump into this much later. You know, how do we go from this temporary Phase 1 to something that's, you know, between Phase 1 and permanent? And, you know, when we talk about Phase 0, that's that, you know, straw bales and, and very, very temporary. We skipped over that step and, and jumped right into our Phase 1. And the reason that we do this work, again, I reiterate it, is to test before you invest. We're at that stage now where we've tested, we're measuring what works, and now we can make adjustments to the final version, or to the next version. So a little bit of a project summary here. I think most people are already aware of this. And James just gave a summary of this. But the main goal of this project is to make it safer for people to walk, bike, and, and also to drive. We're at testing elements of, of the ATP project. And we're gonna make changes based off of the functionality of, of what worked and didn't work in this, in this project. And, and I'm the first to tell you, I'm sure everyone else here is, is also aware, there are things that, that can be tweaked. I mean, we went into that, into this project, knowing that that was gonna be the case. And, and one of the big factors here was also the need to accommodate emergency vehicles in that lane. And that's one of the other elements of, of this design that we're testing. A summary of this, of the process that we went through, we had a really robust outreach process. And, and it was during COVID, unfortunately. You know, I would have loved to have been there. You would have been sick of me by now because I would have gone and, and seen you all multiple and multiple times. But in spite of COVID, we adapted, and we had our Community Action Committee that was open to the public. We were only scoped to do, I think, about five of those meetings. And we did 15, sometimes multiple times a month, frequently going back to the community and, and getting feedback and listening, and then adjusting our plans. We held workshops. We also held office hours where we made ourselves available to anybody who wanted to join and, and just talk to us in a safe space outside of the context of, of those meetings. We also had a very robust communications plan that went into social media. We had paid social media. We had a, a radio program that, that was not implemented. We also did banners. We did news advertisements in, in the local newspaper. At the same time that all that was going on, we, we had a, we developed a design. So based off of the 35% and then 60% designs, we created our site plans, walked through those site plans with Caltrans, who was really, they were a great partner to work with. And I think in the context of this work, we went from zero to completion in seven months, which is really, really fast. I can't underestimate how fast that is. You know, as part of the implementation, we set up NUMINA sensors, which I'll get into in a second, ordered materials, executed our before-data collection, and implemented a, and developed a timeline and, and implementation plan that really guided the, the whole build. Which, in number four, column four there, that was held from December 7th through 11th. We had such a great response. The volunteer activity was, was just, you know, not shocking to us. We, we expected that. But it's just great to see it every time it happens. We had our go-live December 12th. We do have several upcoming CAC meetings, one after, you know, later this month. And then another one that will happen towards the tail end of the demonstration period. And we are also committed to working with Greg and the city on processing any changes that, that might come out of this for the permit rider. And there's gonna be adjustments. The whole expectation of this is, is that there are changes that need to be made. On the materials front, I thought it was worth noting, you know, as we talk about the delineators, we call them armadillos, just because of their shape. And we use these planters. I, you know, it's, it's not a surprise, or, or, you know, it's not gonna be a surprise to this group that the planter aesthetic has not been well-received. I want to clarify that. You know, we had to work with a certain material palette that was gonna be consistent with a highway, which is, but this is a state facility. There are other types of planters that would have been more elegant, but I think this is what we were able to get through, through our Caltrans partners. And they, they're just there to approximate the, the location of, of future tree wells that are gonna be far more elegant. So in terms of our preliminary findings, we installed five sensors at four different locations. There are two at the Y that are pointed at different directions. And I'm, I'll get into some of the other data collection in a moment. But these five sensors are really interesting because they provide a real-time, an ongoing data collection effort that is really groundbreaking in, in our field. And, and for demonstration projects like this, or really any type of transportation project, gives us information and data that we can use to actually plan and respond to. So you can see there, it, it picks up infrared, you know, activities. So it's anonymous. It's not tracking anybody. But it's based off of the size of the vehicles. It knows what's a car versus a truck. And we can get at any moment in the day, we can get the, the mode share, the mode split of all the different travel modes. We can get that at any given moment during the day, and also averages for the whole day, for the week. And we are able to compare that against the, the before counts that were taken. And also, you know, understand the increases in bicycle activity and pedestrian activity. So this is a lot more of a scientific basis in terms of the analysis than just having somebody go out there for a morning and, and do counts. And I can say that this is one of the first projects that is using this methodology. And, and I just, I think it's gonna change our, our industry in a positive way. So what are we testing for? And I think the first thing on this list is bicycle and pedestrian safety. We want to see a reduction in, in injuries and, and hopefully also fatalities. And, and just an increase in bicycle pedestrian safety, both from a qualitative point of view and a quantitative point of view. So that's gonna be, the quantitative is gonna be that NUMINA data and other data that we collect. And the qualitative is, how do people feel when they're biking now and, or walking around? And our survey results start to get to some of that. We're measuring car speeds. And NUMINA is measuring volumes. We're measuring cut-through traffic on the side streets, dwell times, which I think is gonna be something of interest to everyone, parking use and dimensions for those, how folks get in and out of the high school. That was one of the core parts of, of the RFP. Also, making sure that we maintain access and, and safe access to the hospitals and just emergency access throughout for, in the event of, of an evaluation, evacuation, excuse me. So our preliminary data from month one, we did about two months' worth of before counts, starting in, in mid-October. That gives us a baseline, at least for our COVID condition. We acknowledge that this is not the best time for data collection because of COVID and also because school's not in session. Also, this, this first month, you were all under a, a more severe lockdown than you had been previously. And that's gonna impact these numbers, certainly. So we, we expect month two and beyond, the numbers are gonna be more accurate to an apples-for-apples comparison of the before and after condition. But that being said, even in spite of all that, we saw a decrease in, in car activity after the demo with negligible increases in, in cut-through traffic at some locations and actually double-digit decreases at other locations. Pedestrian activity increased between 28 and 86%. That is not a drop in the bucket. That's not a statistical anomaly. You're talking about 130 to 230 people a day that were not there before. And it's the same for bicycle activity, between 23 and 173 people a day on their bikes, every day. That is a big increase that is completely attributable to this project. And I think when you start to talk about climate and, and how this infrastructure and any infrastructure can start to impact our carbon emissions, this is the proof. These numbers start to show that. And I don't think that's gonna change because of the stay-at-home order or not. It's a result of people feeling more comfortable walking and biking. On the car side, our dwell times were not anything that, that is measurable. There was no noticeable increase in, in dwell times along the corridor, with some actually decrease in dwell times at Church Road. And dwell times just means congestion. It's how long is the car, you know, stationary in one location. And then finally, one of the big pieces of this puzzle as well is the speed in terms of traffic calming and just increasing safety. Your, your higher, your people who are speeding, those who are going above 40 miles an hour, that number dropped by over half, 50%. That's huge. And that, that, I think, is one of those metrics that I think is gonna be hard to reconcile with a no-build or a revert back to the old, old condition. And, and just to put a point on this again and underline it, the reason why we, we need to reduce speeds and, and maintain lower speeds is because you, the speed that cars go is directly proportional to how, how folks can survive a collision with a car. So at 40 miles an hour or more, your chances of, of surviving a collision are very low. But if we reduce speeds and open up the field of vision for people who are driving, A, they're, they're gonna be paying attention more and able to actually react. But B, if there is a collision at lower speeds, you're more likely to survive. And I think that alone is, is a good enough reason to stick with major components of this project. In terms of the survey results, I have to tell you, I do this every day, and we've been doing this, I've been doing this for almost 20 years. To have almost 550 survey responses in a context like this is just spectacular. And it shows the, the passion that people have. And, you know, there, there's a good mix of people who are, are not supportive of the project and, and just wanted to go back to the way that it was. But there are so many very supportive, you know, comments, and also very thoughtful, like, you know, I don't like this component of the project, but I like this one. And so I think there's a lot to, to learn from going through these comments. One of the big, one of the big points has been, and this has come through an email and in surveys, are the planters and the parking, and just feeling too tight and, you know, trying to adjust those. And I, I'll go back to the, the beginning of the presentation, and I said, the reason we do this is to test. Imagine if you had just done the ATP project and built it according to the standards that we use, which are basically based off of the ATP project, only to realize that was not enough room. That's the reason we do these projects. Now you know, okay, we need another foot here, another six inches there. Again, the planter aesthetic was not well-received, and, and that's already solved for in, in the, the final version. And generally, there's just always a, a need for better education as, as these projects roll out. It's very typical for people to be confused and not know what's happening, you know, with all the cones and, and the delineators and the new striping. But as the months go on, that's, that's all gonna fade away. But in general, there was broad support for better bicycle infrastructure. So just a few high-level overview of some of these survey results. How has that ATP demonstration impacted your drive? 38% said no impact. Another 14 said minor impact. The other 50% said either that they had changed their drive or that it was a major impact. Do you support the ATP project? Again, there's this 50/50 split. More on the no side on that question. Do you support permanent, support permanent bicycle pedestrian improvements? 56% says yes. I think that's a big deal. And, and, you know, all of these questions together point to major elements of this project still having value, even if people are not necessarily sold on the lane reduction component of it. Here's another question. Has the demonstration project addressed any of these items that have been previous issues? 65% of respondents said speeding cars. And for these questions, some of these questions, you could vote double. So 65% said speeding cars. You know, 19% said traffic, uncomfortable pedestrian crossings, 47%. Now, we'd love to see more, a, a higher number for entering Noroff High. That, you know, obviously, the school not being in session is an issue. What elements do you support of the, of the ATP project? The lane reallocation is, you know, a quarter of the respondents. But when you talk about a separated bikeway, almost 60%, that's a big deal. Other, I'll tell you, I, you know, more than half of other was just, you know, no, no element of it. Here are some final questions here. Do you support the project? Yes, 41%. Do you support permanent bicycle pedestrian improvements? Oh, I'm sorry, I think I said that one earlier. Okay, and to wrap it up, other observations. One of the big questions here was the, the emergency access. And I apologize for this fuzzy video, but, you know, Greg went out there with a fire truck and, and did a test that was successful, showed how, how we could use the bike lane and the buffer for emergency evacuations. We're also looking at delivery trucks all the way, since even during the demonstration build, we were, you know, looking at, at how folks were driving, waving down trucks to ask them to, to make a turn again, just to see if, if it would work. So there was a little bit of that, also testing out the trolley. So there's a lot of testing, even while we were doing the build. There was an unfortunate collision between a bicycle and a car in December. And I know Greg met with the folks out there and, and walked through what happened with that. And, and some changes were made to the design based off of that. We did also have around Christmas, a series of vandalized planters, which, you know, broke my heart to see that, that people would have such anger and, and hate to, to destroy public infrastructure like that. But that is what it is. We also have been looking at the U-turns and, and where, you know, some of these delineator might need to be moved back, and how do you maintain some of those U-turn movements. School opening is a big factor, but, you know, let's keep in mind that it's really just the 15 minutes in the morning and in the afternoon. That, that is gonna be an issue, even when school comes back. And, and I'll close by saying, you have so many options at this point. Our, our task and our, the ask of, of the consultant team was, do, stay close, as close as you can to the permanent project, and let's test that out. But now that it's out there, now's the time to start considering what can be adjusted and what needs to be adjusted. We have funds to, to be able to do that or to remove it at the end of the project, if that's the desire of the council. And we're here for you to ask, answer questions and, you know, just think of us as a resource moving forward. So there's my email address if anybody wants to reach out to me directly. And, you know, thank you very much. I also speak for Dana. I know most of you have, have been dealing with Dana during this project she managed for us. And she is in the audience now. But we're gonna give her a break tonight for this long meeting. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Tony. That was a really thorough presentation. And we are really grateful for your expertise and your attention to detail, as well as your attention to the feedback that you've gotten from our community. Great. So from now, we'll move on from here to public comment.
Mayor, if we could, so, so we had that part, and then the Public Works Director Greg Grant was gonna go over some of the recommended modifications.
Perfect. All right. Take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to move along quickly.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
I don't know if you can see my hand.
I'm sorry. No, not with the screen this way. Yep.
So prior to, before Greg speaks, why don't we go back and ask Tony questions that might, that we might have before? And then when Greg speaks, questions for Greg. And then if we want to get to public comments, then come back and, and bring it back to council. But I don't want to get into Greg's dissertation and then lose track of the questions that we have for Tony. It's a question. It's an ask. It's your call.
All right. James, give preference.
So Greg's portion is focused on some of the recommended modifications. So if there are questions about that, I would suggest holding them till Greg. But if there are questions unrelated to that, then, then those can be taken now.
Okay. Randy?
Well, maybe I wasn't clear. So I'll clarify it, because I don't think James understood it. Are we gonna have Tony come back on and answer questions from council members now? Or do we want Greg to give his presentation and then bring Tony back to ask him specific questions and then ask Greg specific questions? Or is it
Yeah.
easier to do Tony because he just gave his information? And I don't believe Greg and Tony are gonna be providing the same information. If I'm wrong, Greg, correct me.
No, that, that is correct. I would suggest, we are having Tony stay on the, on the call for Greg's presentation. So I'd suggest, let's So I'd suggest, let's get through the presentations and then we can ask Tony questions and then Greg questions.
Okay, I'll proceed then. And I think Tony addressed a lot of comments that were made to the surveys, but I wanted to also address some comments that are made in general since the earlier phases of the project. So one, general one has always been, why even do a two-lane road? Why are we considering this? So I wanted to, I guess, push back to the sixties. There was a, there was a, Caltrans was building four-lane highways. There was four-lane highways being built all throughout the country. A few places pushed back. One of them was Ojai. The citizens that preserved the Ojai was a group born in late sixties, and they got a lot of traction, and they passed state legislation to stop the four-lane highway plan from Carpinteria to Ojai, from Ojai to Santa Paula, and also down to Ventura. You can imagine this valley would be a different world if they had continued with that. So this four-lane section was built right at that time during some developments. And the, it was intended to connect to that in the future. So in some respects, we're lucky. We have a huge hundred-foot wide right of way out there. But in the other side, it's a remnant of something in the past that hasn't happened. And I think most of us would not expect in the future. It does, to benefit as well, provide space for a separated bike lane or other improvements. The two-lane road would significantly improve pedestrian safety. If you're crossing a four-lane highway, that is a risky venture. It's often five lanes, right? When you have a turn lane in the middle. But with two or three lanes, it's significantly safer. Still got to be careful. This also counts traffic. I think Tony in the report had the statistics. The average speed didn't budge much at all from thirty-seven to thirty-five. But the percentage of cars traveling faster than forty miles an hour drops substantially, significantly. And it's not possible to pass cars in speed at the level they did, you know, you can see it in the demonstration shown. The aesthetics might be under question because of our zebra deals and zebra planters. But with a permanent planter, I think we've seen the, you know, the renderings. If we have a permanent planter curb with vegetation and a tree, it can be very attractive. I think we're all aware of the tree-lined streets are much better feel. The shade is nice to walk in and ride a bike in and park a car under. Good example might be shady lane versus one of the more open streets we have around Ojai. Or if you think Creek Road and the exit. Another comment that often comes up that isn't addressed directly in the survey is access to the hospital. So as a reminder, the, from the Y to the hospital, there's no median. So that's not an issue. There's, just like any of the other streets like Ojai Avenue where a full median can be used to drive around any issues that might happen, like an accident or other work in the street. But from the hospital to El Roblar, that section does have a concrete median, and that's where the concern has arisen. So the the detour is bike lane. It's been specifically designed extra wide at eleven feet so that vehicles can drive down it. And Tony showed the test we did with the two fire engines. They've got an older model of the, I think there's Le France. I grew up right next to where they built the France. And unfortunately, they don't build them anymore. But the extra wide engines, they drove both down there and they gave us a full review of that and and it went well, that that detour. The, there's also detour of using other side streets. I mean, if, I, my previous note there talks about a survey we've done here informally, and I've been here for ten years, is we've never had a significant issue on Maricopa where the lanes were black. About thirteen years ago, there was a major water break in front of the hospital, which caused an issue. But otherwise, it hasn't been an issue, and I hope it's not. And but if one of these highly unusual occurrences occur, you can still decide using the bike lane. You can use, go up Church to Cuyama as a way to get around, as well as it shouldn't happen the other side because coming from the Y, we have that open median. There's an easy way to get around. Another issue that comes up frequently is this emergency egress about how would we get out of town in case of a fire like the Thomas Fire otherwise. So most of us were here three years ago during the Thomas Fire, and exit routes were to Ventura and to Carpinteria. It'd be highly unusual to head for the mountains, even if you had flooding, you're still on, wouldn't head for the mountains. So that northerly route would be highly unusual. And I think oftentimes you hear people compare Paradise. In Paradise, I've studied it. They did do a lane reduction downtown. The lane reduction continues south and it has a four-lane roadway just south of the lane reduction. So it's not the same as ours. Ours is we stick with two lanes in all directions, but they have four-lane highway just south of it, which split into three separate roadways. And down on those roadways is where they had issues with trees burning and falling across and blocking the road. So it didn't have anything to do with the lane reduction downtown. That's an unfair comparison. So I want to highlight that. This is a map that's informative just because it shows in yellow that if you can see my cursor, there's Ojai with a star downtown. Well, it's two lanes in all directions, yellow streets, yellow roadways, thirty-three north, one fifty to Santa Paula, thirty-three to Ojai, one fifty to Carpinteria with a mileage, you know, tens of miles except down towards Ventura. There's one strip we're all aware in Oakview, they're both similar at about point seven miles. That's end to end. We're actually not reducing the lane for maybe a tenth ours, and ours is point six mile. But this next, so so exiting Ojai across Maricopa would be a highly unusual egress route. And we did do a supplemental study that addressed this as well. And this slide also further discusses this red dot here is the copy connection, which is very close to where Maricopa hits El Roblar. So we put the directions from there to the intersection of thirty-three and one fifty. The distance you can see is shortest on Tico, but also La Luna and Rice. People know these are all alternative routes or the more direct routes. If somebody wanted to take thirty-three, I think most people know it. You you're heading to the east over the intersection and then down and around. So it's not necessarily a natural way to go for people who know it. So Miners Oaks would tend to directly head south to exit Miners Oaks. Ojai, this area would tend to move down to one fifty. So the use of that egress even to exit down toward Ventura and Carpinteria would be unlikely. It then, I wanted to just do a couple of highlights of the renderings. This is our rendering over by the meadows. You can see the school and the athletic field in this area. And you can see where we have the temporary zebra dio planters. They're a little unfortunate the appearance of them, but this is what we would have is a concrete planter with landscaping in it, a tree planted, just like we have planters, trees in the medians. And these provide that shade for the bikes, cars, pedestrians, and others. So it's a very attractive corridor. It's tend to be calming and it tends to help with traffic in general. And this is the existing situation. Admittedly, quite a stark difference with the plastic planter, but that is the difference in the lower cost project. So that's the intention is to show that we have a planter there that in the future would be a permanent planter landscaping growing. You can even see on the other side of the road where we had committed not to put trees. We committed to recommending that as a final council recommendation. Not having trees because there was some concern by the sanitation district who has the main line over there in in the main path that it possibly could tap the roots down there. So there's the existing condition, right? The the two lanes plus shoulder. And I should highlight as well that if you drive here, you'll see all these old signs that said no parking. They've never been heavily enforced. They've never really been needed to park. And I think we all know on July fourth, there's a lot of people parking out there. So here's another rendering up next to Charlie Stop and across from the hospital. And you can see what happens up here where we've got the two-way bike lane and we've got a striped off zone to act as a buffer. So this one is really very open. You can see in some emergency situation here, even though we have the restraint of the center median, there's a lot of room here to pull over and for emergency vehicles to get by if it was up the median. And you can see the existing demonstration out there now. That's trying to show what it's like, the significant differences. These small Armadillo delineators are, they were allowed by Caltrans in the demonstration, but in the permanent project, they are have never permitted these. So it would be a significant effort. And they really are saying, okay, for the demo, they'd like to see how they work, but they've never permitted, and they're inclined to not allow them for permanent project. So that would take it back to this look without the Armadillos out there. And that was the existing condition before the demonstration of two full lanes. And so getting into the modifications for the demonstration or the permanent project, there's three primary recommendations for council. One is to continue the demo with minor modifications. Two is to continue the demo with substantial modifications. And three is to revise the design to the pre-demo four-lane configuration with separated bike lanes along the curb. An important note on that is the only way you can provide bike lanes next to two lanes is you cannot provide parking, turn lanes, or the school drop-off zone. There's simply not enough room out there. So that approach was not recommended by staff in order to get the most traffic calming and bicycle and pedestrian benefits. The expected benefits of this lane reduction and rework of the entire Maricopa as well as the rest of the project, crossing two lanes, as I mentioned earlier, is safer than four. And the pedestrian is exposed to just a single lane or possibly a turn lane. So it's significantly less exposure, which is where the risk comes in. Additionally, when people pass, sometimes you see one car stop and the other car speeds by. And sometimes you can't see him. The first car blocks it. The bikes obviously get that relocated space and get a protected separated bike lane. The cars and vehicles, when you're exiting in the driveway, it's much easier to judge one lane in each direction than two lanes in each direction and a car speeding by. And I live on Creek Road and often when I leave Creek Road towards Ventura, it's a great example of that. You look left in Arnez Ranch is right there. And there's a si- a single lane opens to, and oftentimes, there's a car slingshotting by. You'll see the one car and you think you're okay, and that other car is whipping by right to the side of it. And it's kind of a good example of how that can be. The counter traffic, no passing lane, it's better limit speed and confinement of that tends to counter traffic as well. There is disadvantages. You're not able to pass. So if there's someone going slow or if you're in a hurry, you cannot pass. And there's a confined feel to that narrower lane. So that is a common way to calm traffic to narrow lanes. And so that bothers some drivers. It is also the turning lane into street or a driveway may slow the primary lane. And that's actually a primary recommendation we have. So with just one lane, I know with, there's a turn lane provided in certain locations like into a school, southbound at church, but other locations don't have that. That can make people feel anxious if someone's riding behind them tightly and helping. So and then dwell time is a discussion for the term used for when you're waiting to enter the roadway. If you, how many seconds you wait for the dwell time. So you're waiting for a gap in the traffic. So you can have, with heavy traffic on Ojai Avenue, you see it. Keep in mind, Ojai Avenue traffics are double to triple what they are in Maricopa. But I think we know when you leave, you try to enter Ojai Avenue from the south, sometimes you can wait because there's not gaps in traffic. So that's being measured by these traffic technology, the numinate traffic technology. At this point, there's there's no indication of change. I don't think there's heavy enough traffic coming in from the side streets that you would notice that. And I think an important point that might get missed here is the four-lane road width is not going anywhere. The curb-to-curb width is going to stay exactly how it is. So if in the future, there was, you know, development up in the Ojai Valley and or that the Cardy Lot over there, the vacant lot became a big shopping area, and there was a high demand for some reason, this road's not going anywhere. The curb-to-curb is there with the asphalt there for the vast majority of it, with very small pockets removed from landscaping pockets as well as the curb extensions. But it's all there and it would not be a minor cost, but, you know, reasonable cost to retrofit it back to the four lanes. So if that was decided in five, ten, twenty years, that the old four-lane road, we miss it, can always go back to. So immediate modifications was remove every other planter. We've already done most of that. That provides more room so people don't have backup parallel park. Even before with a forty-foot gap, they didn't have to, but some did if they parked next to another car already there. Now they can swing into it easier and out of it easier. The two-way bike lane signage was not clear enough, so we added some warning to bikes to what the cars at the exit, the cars look for the bikes. And where the two-way bike lane presently ends is to help clarify that. We have the brighter, the brighter green paint you see out there, and you see the the solid green start of the bike lane in certain locations where it might be confusing. A car might think it's a a travel lane for the car with the bright green there. We're adding, we're still adding that. We've adjusted some delineators to help with the U-turns and the right turns. And we've added reflectors about some of the planters. This is a good example, heading northbound the right at Pyri, and this is a little confusing because just before it, here, there's a trolley turnout. So that trolley turnout opens up and then we've got the the right to Pyri. So we're looking at modifying this to provide a turn lane here. So it's just below the standards for Caltrans, but turn lanes are often substandard. The primary lanes where you keep the the higher widths. So we're looking at a turn lane there. And we're looking at more turn lanes at Pyri and wherever else we can put them, for instance, at Bell Rio, then Franklin Store, VON, and so on. We're also looking at removing the delineators in some areas to help with parking and see if we can shift and make the parking stalls wider. And we're also looking at removing all the parking between Church Road and Y. There's no demand in that area that ever has been. So that would free up the space for these turn lanes. And redoing the U-turn lanes. So here's a good example. As you approach the Vons, we can, we can tighten this up. We can actually keep the two-lane here and have a turn lane kick in. We would want to keep it single crossing a pedestrian crosswalk for safety. But once you pass the crosswalk, you can get into a turn lane, you know, dependent on Caltrans approval. We're working on all the signage markings. Most of that I've mentioned. So these are further discussions about that, clarifying whether there's parking and no parking widening the parking lane. I know a lot of people feel that the car parked close to that main travel lane is risky to open the door. And that's, obviously, that's happening throughout Ojai Avenue in the downtown area. But there's more room when people see that to move towards the median. So we're trying to address that by widening parking spaces and making them longer. It's not recommended to remove the planters. The planters help delineate that that is not a travel lane, and it creates a physical barrier between the travel lane and the bike lane, which is a significant safety improvement. And so you can kind of see the discussion here that these Armadillos, some cars when you pull in, they're at least shaped in the fashion that it's, it doesn't tend to damage the tire or your alignment. But if you really push out, you can bump them. So we're looking at moving those over, but still providing enough room in this lane for the fire engine emergency usage detour. And you can see some of this temporary signage. We're looking at making it more permanent with Caltrans, modifying the permit now. So I think the the permanent project is very similar. Recommendations widening the parking lane, removing some of the U-turns that are prohibited now, making sure we allow them as much as possible. And moving the parking, the two-way bike lane issues. And again, not recommended, remove planters. Removing the trees from planters is also not recommended because of that shade, the aesthetic, the the benefits that they provide. The northbound side, like I had mentioned, from the hospital up all the way to El Roblar, there's a mainline sewer that runs in in the main travel lane. And that, their their concern, those roots might tap that sewer line. I know they've been lining all of the sewer lines and that prohibits the roots from getting in there, but we're we're trying to respect that in recommending to council that we don't put the trees in that northbound side. But uh, we're, we're trying to respect that and recommending to council that we don't put the trees in that northbound side. There's some thought about adding traffic signals or hawks instead of uh, this improvement. A hawk is a, a acronym for a high intensity activated crosswalk beacon. It's the same thing that's down in uh, down uh, what am I thinking of here? Uh, on the way to Ventura, we have one there and uh, it's activated with a PED button. And uh, they're expensive and the hardest part is they require a warrant and you've got to have pretty heavy pedestrian usage or accident uh, to, to justify something like that. So between expensive, the aesthetics and uh, but that would be something that's possible with a four lane configuration. And you'd want to say, yeah, we're not trying to restrict in any way the alternatives council has if there's other one. So uh, I think those are the summary of the recommendations and a reminder that the four lane road width, the hundred foot right of ways and the curb to curb is still there, not going anywhere. I did want to give a cost estimate summary. Uh, this is broken out in a table that shows Maricopa, the first growth in Ojai and a subtotal for both. So for instance, pedestrian improvements about approaching a half a million for pedestrian improvements on Maricopa. Ojai Avenue is 1.55 million. And so that includes crosswalk improvements, sidewalk infill, which are substantial. And uh, that's the biggest part of the project. The bike improvements are substantial, but nowhere's near pedestrian improvements. And uh, miscellaneous costs, landscaping, utilities all add up as well. Our total is 3.7 million. And I think council had already heard, but we were just notified of grant funding, which uh, was being awarded to us and that is going to fill the funding gap from the previous 2.3 million we had for funding for construction. It'll make us uh, whole up to this 3.7 million. So that's spectacular news. And they're also providing some funding for the, any redesign effort that we have. Uh, this is a detailed cost estimate. It's attached to the report. So this is similar to the last one, but in more detail. So you can look at Maricopa Highway, street to street and see where the PED crossing improvements are versus the striping versus sidewalk infill. And right of way acquisition can be substantial as well. Not so much on Maricopa because we have most of it except in front of Ben Franklin. But on Ojai Avenue, there's some substantial right of way that would be necessary to put the sidewalk on the side of the road. So all that detail's there for anyone's sole client. And uh, and then schedule for the demo. It's a six month funding, but it's uh, relatively inexpensive to continue that project all the way until school is fully open and we get to test the project for full couple of months while school is back in operation to see how things operate up front. It is important to highlight that there are improvements proposed in the permanent project, which will make the traffic flow or be absolutely assured will not be a problem up front of the school. Our research shows it's highly likely to be a problem unless there's a very timid driver uh, turning into church from the left-hand per- turn pocket to back sit up. And we're making a provision to let traffic slip by that. But uh, the final project does propose widening that driveway cuts will be two entry lanes that's separate from the right from Miners Oaks and separate from the left. Uh, and then the word of the project will come thereafter about a year uh, after it ends. And then uh, construction is uh, not finalized, but roughly a six month period, a 12 month if we wanted to open it up for reasons we can't think of right now, but it can help to allow more time for construction to get a better tighter bit. So, all right, I am done. Sorry for that long-winded uh, presentation.
That was great, Greg. Thank you so much. Yeah, a lot of moving parts there. So thank you for being so flexible and responding to public comment and uh, very thorough. Um, so we'll take questions uh, from council for Greg or Tony?
Yeah, Randy.
I've got too many. Will someone else start?
Oh, you know, I, Randy, you're not going to go first?
Oh, no, go ahead. I've got quite a few. I'm, I'm collecting myself to put them in priority. I don't know who to go or who to uh, ask first, but there's a ton of questions. First thing, here, I'll, I'll go first here. I have a question for Tony. Mr. Garcia.
Yes, sir.
So that was a great presentation. So your uh, budget was $430,000?
That's right.
What are you doing?
I'm sorry?
What have you been paid to date?
Uh, you know, I'd have to look back at, at my records.
What we've paid him to date?
No, you, you don't, you guys don't pay me. SCAG pays me.
So how would we get any, uh, how would we get Tony any reimbursement for timely materials and effort that we've put into it? How would we get reimbursed for that?
I can answer that. Uh, we have.
We, excuse me. Do we send a bill to Tony?
Uh, we have separate funding to help support the uh, the project overall. So we have some flexible funding known as TDA, which would uh, supports the project. Of course, keep in mind that expenditures anytime uh, could possibly reduce the uh, the construction funding, but we have funding set aside, especially that new funding to help support this demonstration project.
Okay, so um, where's James? James, can you respond to that? I'm not sure what Greg's speaking to. Have we set aside additional funding after council said we would not fund anymore to this project?
No, we haven't set aside any additional funding. Uh, we uh, I think we identified at the last ATP meeting that we had three staff people that we were assigning to it, uh, but we haven't identified any additional funding.
So then what's Mr. Grant talking to?
Uh, I'm talking about the new funding that we had that council authorized, pursuing additional funding. And we did uh, pursue the closing the funding gap for the uh, the uh, construction as well as supporting redesign and coming to a final design, which includes the demonstration.
So Greg's referring to the grant funding that we uh, were informed we were receiving Friday, which is not, so it's not the uh, it's not any city funding.
So let's, so is my question clear enough or am I um, not clear on my question? Greg, do you understand what I'm asking? Tony, do you understand what I'm asking?
You're asking if, if the city is going to get reimbursed for costs related to the demonstration project that you've incurred and the answer is no. The, the expectation is when you take on a project like this, there are costs that you have to incur. That's just normal for, for a demonstration project.
And Mr. Grant, you were aware of that when we entered this contract, that we were going to have to expand additional funds to do the implementation that the $430,000 that we're paying Tony and his group, that we would have to supplement that?
I would say we're not buying, we're not spending any money materials. We might, we have staff time supporting it. My time uh, and staff uh, doing some of the alterations.
We're supplementing this 430,000 either or material or labor, but we're supplementing it. Am I correct?
I think that's fair enough. We had to apply for it. We have all this work that's involved in it, sure.
Okay, so then my question is there are no, there is no new funding. We're using existing city dollars out of our existing general funds to pay for any additional work being provided by the city on this project to date. That's, that's an easy one. It's either yes or no.
We're, we're designating some staff time towards it.
And we're paying for this.
The cost, yes.
Okay. And my question is how are we going to get reimbursed for that? And is there a method for it?
There is no method for reimbursement of that now. Would it be possible for the city to use the new 1.6 million dollars recently approved by VCTC for those costs? Is that a choice before the council? I'll look to Mr. Grant on that one.
Generally, funding, is it retroactive generally? I mean, we could talk to the funders and ask about it.
We do have funding that's left in our grant that is for removal. If council decides that they do not want to remove the project, we can use those funds for alterations and for other items.
So again, I just want to be clear. The council made a um, made a decision and provided direction to staff that we would not be utilizing any more additional funds. Mayor, this was prior to you coming on board, but that was the decision that council made. And so now what I'm hearing is that we're exceeding that, we've gone past that. We haven't come back to council, one, to ask for it. Two, we don't have any, we don't even have any idea right now what we've spent or how much more we will spend. Am I correct, Mr. Grant? Have you been keeping track of the time that we have been placing city employees on this task regarding ATP?
Uh, we probably have an idea of that. Yeah, we keep pretty detailed records with Kudos daily.
Hey, would you get me a copy of those? I imagine the rest is, the rest of council would like that too. To date, and then we can have one going forward. Cause I'm sure there's going to be additional money out of pocket that we're going to have to be utilizing our general fund for. So that's my first question. I just wanted to clarify that this is costing us more out of pocket, general fund money and the fact that we've paid Tony's group $430,000 or we haven't, but SCAG is. Um, and, and we are incurring additional costs. I just want to, just want the public needs to know that. Okay, now Tony, I think I have a couple more other questions for you.
I, I want to make a comment about the funding.
Can we, can we ma- just keep it to questions right now and then we'll um, we'll have a chance to discuss it later. Uh, any, do you have a question, Suzie?
Well, I just want to make a comment, but if this, if this project is successful, there's every indication that we will get fu- federal funding, that you know, there, these types of, there is funding for these kind of projects if they succeed. There's every indication that any money we spend down the line, there could be reimbursement if we succeed. Because you know, there, the um, that's all I have to say about that. Yeah.
Thank you. Randy, you have another question?
So the next question, and I'll go back to um, to Tony. Tony, on the um, sensors, you're stating that you put them up two months prior?
Uh, approximately about, it was October 20th.
Okay, and then you provided all that data to us where every sensor was?
Uh, yeah, yeah. I mean, Greg has uh, uh, is able to log into the dashboard. I am. Any of you are to see the, the data.
No, so have you printed that and formalized it and sent it to any of us as council members? Or are you expecting us to go to your site and gather the information ourselves?
I mean, you're free, you're free to, you're free to go to the website if you want, but there is a monthly report that goes out to Caltrans that will include all of that information. Yeah, exactly.
So.
The data is in the staff report.
So, I just, I'm just trying to ask, ask questions, Suzie. You don't have to protect this guy. He seems to be a pretty knowledgeable guy. So Tony, um, and this is what he does for a living. There's nothing, I'm not asking any questions. He probably has.
My objection is there's a hundred people waiting to speak. The conversation.
We, we'll get, finish Randy's questions and we'll move on to uh.
Everyone else has questions too. I can't be the only one. So um, so Tony, again, my concern with the sensors is the fact that we've not received any reports or any accounting on a month-to-month basis. How does this work? Um, if I asked Greg, could he go back and provide us this information on a month-to-month? Or can you send us the Caltrans reports that you've been providing to them on a month-to-month basis? If, if that's how it's being shared with Caltrans?
W- we can do any of those. Um, and what we can provide it to you directly. I mean, I'll, I'll take Greg and James's lead on that, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll work with Greg and Tony. We'll provide monthly reports.
Yeah, totally.
Because I, because I think that's important moving forward. We need to know what we started with. Um, and then the other problem that we're going to have with any type of tracking and any type of this data collection is the fact that we didn't start pre-COVID. We started during COVID and that's not on you, Tony. That's just the way it is. I get that. So all of the information that we're going to receive is going to be distorted one way or the other because we don't have any of this information prior to COVID. We only have it during COVID and right now after or whenever COVID ends. So am I?
I mean, that's, that's fair, but you know, we do have some data from, uh, and Greg, remind me of the date. But Caltrans does have volume data at either end of the corridor. That gives us a baseline pre-COVID. And that goes from 7,000 cars a day to 11,000 cars a day. There isn't a great amount of bike PED data, so we can't compare what the increases have been um, from pre-COVID. But, but certainly for volumes, I think we can make some comparisons.
So again, the comparison is a lot more on vehicles than on pedestrian and on bikes.
Right.
Okay, and, but you could provide that data.
Yeah, yeah. We got it from you guys.
Provide that back to us too in a timely manner?
All right. I guess the trick is that, that new devices are pretty tricky. They do piles of monitoring. You need to decide what you want. And I think Tony has some uh, standard reporting that they do. Yeah.
Okay, well, I've got three more pages of questions. So before I ask them, I'll let someone else have the floor.
And thank you Greg and Tony and James for providing that information for Randy. Any other questions from anyone else? Suzie?
When, my, my only, I wa- I'm eager to hear the public. So my only question to Greg and uh, Tony is when we get to council discussion, can you go back and pull up the slides? Because I, my questions, I would, it's better for the, I, I think to understand my question if we go back to the slides.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, that's my, and then I'll, so I'll wait until we're in council discussion. I do want to say that there's no way that Caltrans would have allowed to us to experiment with a, a lane reduction if the traffic data they had, had not mer- had not merited it. Caltrans has plenty of pre-COVID data to, that shows that the traffic count will, can be accommodated by one lane. And correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Okay, uh, thank you, Susan. Any other questions, Randy?
No, I appreciate Suzie's opinion. Um, I'd like to hear it directly from a Caltrans individual, but I'll accept her opinion. Um, like I said, I have three or four pages. I can wait, but um, um, I'm under the impression that the public comments are going to be more likely of, of for or against. That's why I'm not sure why we're not at, at, why not, why we're not asking more questions pertinent to all of the information that we just received, or am I the only one that has them?
It appears that you're the only one who has them. Suzie, you have a question?
Yeah, my, my understanding was that they're, they're um, they're looking for direction from council. And so my questions are related to what direction I want to give to Public Works and to Anna, Anthony, Tony. So that's why I thought I would wait until the time for council discussion.
Then fine, I'll save myself for when we deliberate, I guess.
Yeah. I think that's a courtesy to the public as well.
Thank you, Renan. Uh, thank you, Suzie. And now we get to move on to public comment. So Gail, um, who is our first speaker?
Okay, um, let me make sure we have the timer ready.
Thank you.
Okay, our first speaker is Adam Newton. Adam, you should be able to talk. Um, if you're muted, please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Okay, yes. Uh, first off, for uh, last in, first up. Um, thanks. Uh, I only had the comment that I've been uh, driving back and forth and riding my bike back and forth on this stretch of highway for going on 40 plus years. And um, I think it's, it's working uh, as, as well as it could be at the moment. It's uh, I saw tons of bikes this weekend, uh, or last weekend and I've enjoyed riding it um, since it's, since it's changed. It's um, you know, I, it's not that I would do anything different. Uh, I think uh, two uh, two-way on one side would have been a good um, step, but uh, it's uh, it's working as well as it can and I am pretty much happy with uh, um, the demo. as well as it can, and I am pretty much happy with, uh, um, the demo, uh, of course, it will be much better with the trees, but, um, I was mainly just in, gonna say, I think it's, uh, a good project, so I didn't have, uh, anything else prepared to go first.
Thank you, Adam.
Sure, no problem.
Brave person to go first, uh, okay, Gail, who is next?
The next person we have is Betsy Watson. Betsy, oops, cancel. Betsy, I apologize, I'm going to come back to you, the Zoom software is, um, um, misbehaving. Um, the next person we have is Bill Miley. Um, Bill, you should be able to speak, um, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, for the record, my name is Bill Miley, my family has lived in the valley for, in Ojai for 52 years. Um, I support this effort for our city and the valley. By calming the domination of this section of our city by vehicles is really important for its future. Try to walk across it is risky, bicycle across it is risky, make entrance turns from two lanes, or cross two lanes is risky. In the past, when I've driven the highway at 25 to 35 miles an hour, many times vehicles are going faster, especially when the yellow light's on to slow people down. I know there are many critical comments that people, uh, are going to say to keep it four lanes. A demonstration project is designed to blend those to make it better. The ideal, the idea for change on Ojai 150 to improve it didn't come easily, we already know that a lot of efforts get into it. We are waiting for the Norhoff High School to, again, have students, is something we obviously have to have, so let's lower our city's vehicle footprint to create a more gentle landscape for our citizens and visitors. Let's even add lowering the pollution levels on Maricopa from vehicle exhaust as a benefit. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Bill, nice to hear your voice. Who's up next, Gail?
Next, we have Chelsea Gusterson. Chelsea, you should be able to speak, um, go ahead and unmute yourself if you're muted, and go ahead.
Okay. Uh, hi, uh, first off, I want to say I'm not completely against this idea, but I do feel that this was awful timing during the pandemic. We do not know how this will impact with the traffic, you said, uh, 15 minutes possibly, when we had four lanes, it hindered us for at least 45 minutes after Norhoff got out, so I think that's kind of unrealistic. On top of that, I know the issue of the emergency vehicles was supposedly addressed by proposing that they use the bike lane, but as a mother of two trying to ride a bike in that area, and then having an emergency vehicle try to come through while you're trying to ride, I think that's also not very realistic. Um, I have watched some of your previous council meetings, and I am aware that you feel that this is a great thing to do, and I think it would be if done properly. However, I would like to caution on pushing this through, just so we can set an example for other areas, because we're mainly trying to focus on the people of Ojai and what they would like, and it seems like a lot of people are against not having as much area and safety to pull off. Um, I'd like to ask the council to please set an example of listening to our concerns and modifying accordingly, not just pushing because you want this and you want the federal funding that we may or may not get back to pay the city back. Um, also, I do want to say I'm disappointed because I was unaware the city itself was spending money on this, I was under the impression it was all grant money. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea, for participating. Who is up next, Gail?
The next person we have is Daniel Malloy. Daniel, go ahead and speak, if you're muted, please unmute yourself.
What happened to Betsy Watson?
Um, her, um, some people have outdated, um, Zoom software on their home computers, and it shows up differently on my screen, um, so I will come back to her, um.
Thank you, that's all.
Yeah. Go ahead, Daniel. Hello?
Hello?
Is, is that Daniel, you can go ahead and speak. Okay, I'm going to mute him again, and I will come back to him.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
So, the next person I have is David Gare. David, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you can speak.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I, just very short and brief, um, I've been here since 1958, have seen it come and go, totally support this project, I drive it, I ride it, uh, it just made it so much more convenient, it's safer, um, can't say enough good things about it, so I appreciate the effort put into it. That's all I have.
Wow, thank you, David, thanks for keeping it brief, too. All right, next, Gail.
Okay, next we have Corinna Wright. Corinna, um, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and speak.
Hi, thank you very much. As a driver and a walker and a biker, I frequently, um, I'm on the stretch of road, and I wanted to voice my enthusiastic support for this project. I find driving there now, even with the odd cones, it's very clear which lane to get into, to turn, I find parking to walk in the meadow very easy with spacious spots, and sure, you have to take a moment to make sure a car is not coming before you open your door, but I find that to be no different than when I park on any street. Um, and biking previous to this was very dangerous, um, going over to the Valley Meadow, um, oftentimes, cars would be driving in excess of 50 miles an hour, almost in a fit of rage, that I was biking along as close to the edge as possible. So, I want to applaud everybody for doing this demonstration project, I really appreciate it, I hope it goes through, I like all the changes that you have thought about, and I look forward to its permanent place in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinna, for participating. Next, Gail?
Next, we have Cynthia Severs. And Cynthia, go ahead and unmute yourself, you can go ahead and speak. Cynthia, are you there?
Uh, okay.
There.
I'm here.
Okay, hello, you can go ahead.
All right, thank you, I live off of Church Road, and, um, the, it's always a challenge, uh, when Norhoff is opening to go anywhere, but that's neither here nor there, I think that the general objective should first be to, um, put a painted bike lane in, in order to allow, uh, some safety for bicyclists, and secondly, to have pedestrian-operated stoplights, that would be very helpful during the time that Norhoff is in session. I might also add that clearly, the original objective of that area would allow for medical and commercial, um, necessities for the whole valley, and, um, I find it difficult to leave Bonds to go back to Perry Road or to Church Road, and, um, I think that.
Cynthia, could you speak into your microphone, we're losing you.
Oh, all right, um. Tried dramatically to make it more in tune with the original design of that area, the urban design of that area, because the, um, me- the hospital and the medical facilities and the, um, the shopping centers need to be the primary objective of that.
Thank you, Cynthia, Cynthia.
Okay.
Who's next, Gail?
Okay, I am going to try Daniel Malloy again, and hopefully, um, we can get him on this time. Daniel, go ahead and speak, um, you should be unmuted. Can you hear us? Okay, um, we'll try him one more time later on.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
Okay, so next I'm going to bring up, um, next we have James Oddling. James, if you're there, go ahead and, uh, unmute yourself, and you can speak. James, are you there, James Oddling? Okay, I'm going to mute him again, and we will, um.
I have, I've, I've had several texts from people, I just glanced at my phone.
Mm-hmm.
They're wondering if you could indicate who, not only just, uh, so they have a little warning, can you say who's the next speaker is, you know, like they do, uh, is that hard for you?
It, the, the Zoom software isn't really conducive to that.
Okay, I'll tell them.
Okay, I, I would love to, we don't have all the capabilities that we do in a live meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next is Deepak, cut, I'm gonna mispronounce your na- last name, and I apologize, Kaushik. Um, go ahead and unmute yourself, um, and you can go ahead and speak. Deepak, are you there?
I am here, I, I did not intend to speak, actually, I just had to check off the, uh, the box, so you can, you can take me off.
Okay.
Just observing.
Okay.
Well, thanks for coming, Deepak.
Yes, thank you.
Next, Gail?
So, next we have Christopher Young. And Christopher, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and speak.
Thank you very much, um, pleasure to be here with you, and my thanks to all of you, uh, council and staff for the work that you've done, uh, there, there's no question, I am in support of this project. I very much appreciate, uh, the consideration of the council in regard to climate, uh, and I, it's been troubling for me, um, the numbers of things that I've seen written on Nextdoor and other places, the kinds of accusations that, that some members of our community are comfortable making, uh, a- about, um, our city council, um, things like that you folks already made up your mind, you really don't give a damn what we think, and you're just going to do your pet thing, I just find that stuff really troubling, um, I, I personally have, have had disagreements, uh, with a number of you in terms of things over the years, but that has nothing to do for me with, uh, my belief without question that you are working, uh, for us in our best interest, and that you are clearly listening to us. And the idea of a few people being really loud and, and saying that they don't get their way, that they're not being listened to, I think is pretty ridiculous, um, so, um, I, slowing traffic makes sense, um, and I really, uh, feel that the whole, the whole movement of just simply trying to make our community safer, healthier in a variety of ways, and more conducive to all, is, uh, it won't be all, but to most of us, that's the whole idea, so, again, I thank you all very, very much.
Thank you for the kind words, Christopher. Uh, next, Gail?
Okay, next we have Russell Sidney. Russell, you can go ahead and speak, um, if you're muted, please unmute yourself. Russell Sidney, are you there? Okay, I'm clicking the ask to unmute button, but I will come back to him.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, you're there?
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for addressing the concerns of the bicycle and pedestrian safety on Maricopa. Unfortunately, we are still far from optimum safety features from Maricopa, and to a possibly larger extent for Ojai Avenue. Please include the safety on Ojai Avenue in all your future considerations. I would encourage you to maintain the pursuit of optimum safety both through demonstrations and through community meetings, to work at all the concerns and at the best possible safety features. There are many safe, safety features that are currently not included in the 60% design, and therefore not included in the demonstration. Option one of keeping both the one-way protected bike lanes on the hospital side of Maricopa, as well as the two-way protected bike path on the high school side is critically important. It would be even better if the two-way path was to go the entire length, at least from El Roglard down to Valle Rio, if not all the way to the Bonds parking lot. Option two with additional elements might be suitable. The addition of right-turn pe- pockets wherever bicycles cross driveways and inter- intersections is the biggest bicycle safety concern that comes from vehicles crossing bike lanes. Turn pockets would improve the through-traffic flow for the vehicles. The heavy expenditure, expenditure to remove medians and adding left turns into the high school helps cars at the expense of bicycle safety, as it, as it seriously compromises the safety of the two-way lanes. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Russell. Who's up next, Gail?
Okay, next we have Michael Shapiro. Michael, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, thank you for holding the meeting. One of the things that, uh, I, I think is necessary, and I haven't seen, and really would respond to a lot of questions that have been critical of the project, was that in the case of an emergency, like the Thomas Fire or something else, uh, what about evacuating, uh, the area? There are several alternative evacuation routes that are, that are actually faster, if you want to get down to the freeway, the 101 by way of Casita Springs, there are faster routes, but we need evacuation street signs, I've seen them in other communities, um, and I'm wondering if that's something that can be considered to get, maybe that's a Caltrans request, I don't know, but wherever there are alternative routes to evacuate and bypass Maricopa because of emergency perhaps taking place there, we need those evacuation markers so people understand, uh, so if that could be done, that would, that would be an improvement. Uh, other than that, I think this is an amazing project, the diligence going into it is pretty astonishing, the volunteerism that makes it such a community project is wonderful, uh, I, I would say that any, anything we could do to strive to make sure that we never have another death or maiming and injury is worth it. Uh, I don't want to see another Edith Rubeloff who was killed while crossing in her walker, or Dr. Fred LaFavre's teenage son was killed while on his bicycle, my friend Norman Rem, whose car was totaled, he had to be rescued by the jaws of life. If we could do anything to never have any of that happen again, we will have done a heroic thing in this project, in the process add to cleaning the air and making Ojai and the Ojai Valley a more beautiful place. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for your participation. Gail?
Next, we have Kelly Pascoe. Kelly, you should be able to speak, um, go ahead and unmute yourself if you're muted. Kelly, are you there? Okay, I will come back to Kelly, and I'll find the next. Okay, I will come back to Kelly and I'll find the next speaker. Next, we have Jennifer Brown. Jennifer, if you're there, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and speak.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
I don't know how this phone works or this works.
I, am I going?
Yes, go ahead. Kelly came on, but I muted him. Kelly, if you're listening, I will unmute you after the speaker and then you can go ahead.
Well, as you know, I'm Jennifer Brown. I grew up here. I've lived in Miners Oaks, in the East End and in downtown. I've ridden my bike and walked basically everywhere, including along the Maricopa Highway. Currently, I live in Ojai Terrace and I'm still on the fence about this project. I can see a lot of thought has gone into it and I appreciate that. But again, because I live behind, in Ojai Terrace, which is off the Maricopa Highway, it is, when the high school is in session, it takes me 20 minutes to get out of my neighborhood, whether I'm going left to Miners Oaks or right to go into downtown. I have to go, I travel the Maricopa Highway every morning to go feed horses and sometimes it's just a very complicated trying to make a left turn onto the Maricopa Highway. And I know that you say that there's been a decrease in traffic, but I happen to know a lot of people are cutting through the Arbolata, which I know is not something that people in the Arbolata are crazy about. So, and my main concern is the bike path. When I ride my bike, I use the bike path all the time, so why aren't we not updating and maintaining it and possibly installing solar powered lights for it to make it safe and more friendly, user-friendly? So, those are my two cents.
Thank you, Jennifer. Kelly, who's up next?
Kelly, are you still there? If you are, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Hi, my name's Kelly Pascoe. Just full disclosure, I'm one of the owners of the mob shop, the bike shop in Ojai. I live in Miners Oaks and I am wholeheartedly in support of this program. I ride every day now safely down Maricopa Highway to the bike path and ride to work and it's been a wonderful situation for my personal situation, just the safety, the enjoyment of it. I look forward to it every day versus what it was before. And I have to speak for my customer base who have, probably a lot of them aren't here tonight, but they are, I've had so many people come out and speak so positively about this project that they feel safe coming, going from Miners Oaks. It's just, I can't say enough about how many people on a daily basis are in support of this that probably aren't here tonight to speak to this. And that's all I have to say and thanks for everyone and all the volunteers that have made this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Who do we have next, Gail?
Next, we have Mike Flanagan. Mike, if you're there, you should be able to speak. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
I've unmuted myself, thank you.
Perfect, great, thanks.
I've lived here in Ojai for 25 years and I'm very active in and around Ojai. I happen to be the coach of the Nordhoff High School Girls Lacrosse Team, so I'm traveling Maricopa Highway four to six times a day for a variety of reasons. I'm supporting this initiative in that I think it has some safety terrific ideas, but I'm very concerned about the fact that most of the data that we've been exposed to this evening has not really taken into account the COVID influence and the fact that we don't have the high school open. So COVID has increased bicycle traffic and reduced car traffic. High school not being in session has reduced the amount of people lining up to go get their children on both sides of the highway, going into from the northbound side or going south and lining up on the right-hand side next to the curb. So I'm very, very disappointed that you've taken this to the point it is without the correct data behind it. I know you're planning to have a month or two, you're hoping that high school will open up, but we don't know when that's gonna happen. Another thing, someone made mention of the fact that there's highly unusual to go into the mountains on an emergency situation we have like the Thomas Fire. I tried to go down Maricopa Highway during the Thomas Fire about 10:30, 11 o'clock in the morning to get out of here. I tried several different routes, I couldn't go anywhere. I finally ended up in a traffic jam on El Roblar and Rice Road for well over half an hour. I turned around and went up the mountains to Santa Maria, through Maricopa to Santa Maria. Took me a long time to get out of the valley. So saying that we don't have a lot of unusual traffic up to the mountains, we do. And the reason I know we do is because I was in a heavy traffic line all the way up 33 to Maricopa. So there's more data that needs to be influenced here or brought to the fore so that we can consider this properly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Next, Gail?
Next, we have John Lamar. John, if you're there, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I'm calling in to speak in support of the project. I know it's not perfect and the planters look really funny. I know a lot of people don't even know that this is a temporary project. And so, you know, the education of everyone, it's really important, we live in America, that if you disagree with this and you, and/or you agree with it, that you be heard. And I'm part of the bicycle advocacy people here and I want everyone to know that we really care about how you feel about this project and we want it to work, you know, as much as possible for everyone. There are at least four people from the Miners Oaks area that have contributed to some of the input from the community and I want to make sure, because there's some people who are thinking that nobody from Miners Oaks has contributed to this project. There's many people that have gone to a lot of meetings and attended a lot of meetings and offered their input, so it's important to know that I know at least four people from Miners Oaks who have done that. I'm also looking at the project and noticing that a lot of people are using the bike lane on the Nordhoff side as a two-way. So I'm encouraging us to come up with solutions, safe solutions, to be able to have a two-way bike lane on the Nordhoff side that's safe and has the proper signage and everything that it needs. But I'm in full support of this. I know people that have worked on this tirelessly for years and years and I'm very proud of our community for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Who's up next, Gail?
Okay, next, we have Bert Rap. Bert, if you're there, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and speak.
Okay, I'm Bert Rap. I live in Oakview. I drive that stretch of the road probably two or three times a week. I just wanted to say that the improvements are gonna be really valuable and very helpful. They will slow down the vehicle traffic. They will make it much safer for pedestrians, especially the ones crossing the street. It'll make it safer for bicycles and there really won't be any true loss in vehicle capacity because all of the roads connecting to that stretch are all two lanes and I strongly support the project and I hope it goes forward. It's gonna be a dramatic improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Bert.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Gail?
Yes.
I got, I'm getting these texts. One was from Chris Young, who said his connection was disabled and he can't observe the proceedings. Is that a problem at our end or his end?
After each speaker is done speaking, they're removed from the software and they can continue to watch the meeting on our website or YouTube or on Channel 10.
I'll tell them that, thank you.
Okay.
And the others.
Anybody watching, if that happens, you can go to youtube.com/user/ojacytine and watch the meeting.
Thank you, James. Thanks, Gail.
Next, we have Daniel Malloy. Daniel, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Dan Malloy, grew up in Ojai, actually have been hit by a car when I was a kid. That was my fault, but I travel that stretch daily. We have a new son that we take on our bike. We, I drive it, I run it and I ride it. And, you know, I've thought a lot about all the different sides of this thing and I just am in full support of it. I just can't think of a reason that we, you know, there's many, there are many reasons and there are many things to figure out, but from the team that I've seen, because I've been inquiring to, you know, all of the volunteers, it seems like people are working really, really hard to use this demonstration as a way to find out the best possible answers for a, you know, much safer and much just more user-friendly road. So anyway, I'm in support of it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dan. All right, next, Gail?
Next, we have Rebecca Ketner. Rebecca, if you're there, you should be able to go ahead and speak if you're muted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, perfect.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Ketner. So I've lived in Ojai for about 20 years. I use Maricopa every day. I really advocate for the bike paths, but I find the rest of the project kind of confusing and it feels unsafe. Have some concerns about the cost. I have concerns about the data collection and the accuracies of data collection during My experience does not agree with what I'm hearing from the survey results, which is interesting. I'm having a really hard time turning left out of Ben Franklin by the attitude adjustment shop, just sitting there as time goes by, because the traffic is all in one lane and slowed down. So I don't know what, if the dwell time that you were speaking about, I don't know about that. I was also questioning about the side traffic being measured in the Arbolata. And in general, I just want to say that I'm hearing so much negative feedback about it. I'm not sure if the council is really responding to the community. People are very, very frustrated, they're very upset, they don't feel like the survey really gives them a chance unless they go all the way down and leave it in comments if they don't like it. So I really encourage you to continue to listen to the community members. I do appreciate the work everyone's put into it, but please be aware that people feel condescended to, they feel very, very frustrated, they feel not listened to and I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to work this out in a peaceful way and please listen to all of the feedback, whether it's positive or negative. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rebecca. Appreciate being here. All right, next, Gail?
Next, we have Noel Douglas. Noel, if you're there, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and go ahead. Noel Douglas, are you there? Okay, I will come back to him. And the next person is Bobby Corbin. And, there. Bobby Corbin, if you're available, if you're unmuted, there you go. Go ahead.
I want to show my full support for this project. My first experience on this odd strip of four-lane Maricopa Highway was a near accident my first year in Ojai in 2004 when a speeding car tried to pass me on the right and I've never really understood why this out-of-scale and out-of-character piece of road is here. The question of this project is not in the details, which I feel confident will be worked out, but really what kind of town we want Ojai to be. I think the days of car culture seem misguided at this point and yet it's still really treacherous to walk and to ride your bike safely in Ojai. This project is a critically important first step towards the future. It will transform this zone aesthetically and functionally. And I look forward to the better access to the high school, safer for all modes of transportation by defining their paths. And I guess I was surprised when I heard that there was opposition to this project because to me it seems like a no-brainer. I love the way it's looking, I enjoy driving there, parking by Meadow Preserve, I think it's gonna be wonderful and I urge the council and the town to support it and thank you for doing this demonstration. I think it really makes this accessible to the town and gives everybody a chance to really understand it a little bit better, so it has my full support.
Thank you, Bobby. Right, next, Gail?
Next, we have Dennis McCarthy. Dennis, go ahead, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself.
I think I am, Gail.
Oh, there you go, okay.
Okay, great. So my name is Dennis McCarthy, I'm a citizen of Ojai, I'm also a member of Save Maricopa Highway. This weekend, we gathered petitions to stop the lane reduction at Vons. We didn't really know what to expect, so we just printed up a few petitions. We were surprised at the anger among the people who responded. Even Tony Garcia mentioned this, that people are really angry. About 80% of those walking out of Vons responded to us. Those 80% stopped, put down their grocery bags, gave us their comment why they hated the project, then signed a petition. The other 20% kind of scuttled away without engaging, so we don't know how many of those liked the project or simply didn't want to engage. I would say that if the city council wants to hear from more than the small group which has been encouraging this project, I recommend that council members go to Vons to listen to people's opinions. You will get an earful, as we did. We filled up our petitions in one hour and I dropped off the petitions at City Hall, as noted. So that's my comment. I think, I think there's a lot of anger out there about this project and may not be visible on this particular call or call-in. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, Gail, next?
Next, we have Sally Greenwood. Sally, if you're there, if you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead Sally, are you there? Okay, so I will come back to her. And next, we have Alan Gross. Alan, if you're there, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and speak. Oh, he, he seems to not be at, he's not there, but Sally Greenwood, you should be, it looks like you've unmuted yourself, so if you want to go ahead? Sally Greenwood, are you there? Okay, I'm gonna mute her again and I will go on to the next person who is, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Cassia Levitt or Cassia Levitt?
Hello, I'm here.
Yes, go ahead.
This is Cassia Levitt speaking. I've been living here for 14 years and this has been a wonderful presentation. Thank you, Mr. Garcia and Mr. Grant. And it has been an exciting project for Ojai Valley and in my opinion, it would address a couple of important problems. So first of all, it will create a safe bicycle route system for the Maricopa Highway area. Second, it will give pedestrians a safer place to cross this highway, which often has been kind of an unsafe experience. Another point is the four-lane highway was and continues to be out of place in Ojai and we're a small community and this road leads to nowhere, pretty much. And last but not, at least but not last, is I love the trees idea along the road, the more trees, the better. It will far It will further beautify this part of town, which in my opinion, looks a little bit industrial because of the four-way highway. And since I have a little bit more time, I would like to come back to number one point that I was making, the safe bike route system. So, um, it will help create a safer passage for children who are attending schools around Ojai Valley. I would like to emphasize the point that there are many schools, two schools in Miners Oaks and three, uh, around Ojai Valley. And children do commute from one part of town to, uh, to another, so from Miners Oaks to Ojai Valley. Uh, and, uh, but it will put parents at peace of mind and allow children, uh, and allow children to, uh, to bike, uh, bike around town more. And that will help with, uh, you know, with promoting, with encouraging, um, healthy.
Thank you very much, Kasia. All right, next, Gail.
Okay, let's see. So next, we have John Merk. John, if you're there, you should be able to unmute yourself or you should be able to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, council members. I just want to say, um, as a member of what was once called the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan Subcommittee, I'm really happy to see this project coming to fruition. As you are aware, governing is about choices and you have a choice here of moving ahead or moving back. And, um, I think leaving things as they are and refusing to deal with climate change or the changing face of Ojai is really the wrong way to go. I'm, um, really excited to see the progress that can be made with this project. It's, um, we're improving the bike access and pedestrian safety. We're encouraging people to ride their bikes to and from Nordoff. And we're encouraging visitors to really expand what, how much of Ojai they see and where they go there. And I think this is going to be just a fantastic addition to the city. I wish we could do more of it. And I think, um, you know, one of the speakers mentioned, um, not wanting to be an example for other areas. I think actually Ojai does have a, a unique and really important, responsibility to lead the way for other California committee, committee communities. And, um, I think this is a great way to do it. So thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming, John. All right, Gail, who's next?
Next, we have Tina Bromand. Tina, if you're there, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I have participated in the planning meetings, several of them, over the course of this past year. And, um, like others, I am very much in support of this project. I've almost been hit dropping my child off at Nordoff and walking across the street with my dogs. And someone did, just as another had described, where the person stopped in the crosswalk or stopped as I was crossing, but the car behind them swooped around to pass them in the right lane. I'd also like to point out that what I heard Greg Grant say earlier was a statistic, and I know that they are temporary statistics, but what I made a note of was that he, he mentioned that there has been a larger reduction in the, in the highest speeders that are traveling along there. And that is quite promising because that's really the objective, right? Is to quiet down those fastest speeders that are making the road the most dangerous for walkers, for bicyclists, for whomever. So I would like to express my support. I hope that we don't choose, um, option number three that Greg mentioned, which is to go back to four lanes. We really need to reduce the lanes for safety. And I've been in part of this project all along. And I think that you've done a very good job identifying those areas where we're all in agreement that there's needed for improvement. But I think listening to those that have been so vocal complaining about this seems very unsubstantiated to me in terms of their concerns not being addressed by the modifications that have already been proposed. So I would say, please, please continue with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Gail, could we take this moment to take a three-minute break for, um, stretch?
Sure.
And back nutrition? Okay, thank you. There you go. Gail, can you hear me? Hello?
She stepped away for a second.
Oh, okay. Hi, thank you, James.
Mayor Sticks, I was in the restroom. James Hahn said you were asking for me.
Oh, I've just, uh, are we ready to return? Thank you, Gail.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we're back. Thanks, Gail. Who's next?
Next, we have Grace Malloy. Grace, if you're there, uh, you can go ahead and unmute yourself if you're muted and, uh, go ahead and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, glorious. Um, I live in Miners Oaks and have lived in Ojai for 20 years. And as my husband Dan said, uh, he and I and our young son have been biking and driving the demonstration and walking and just watching. Almost every day and, um, have yet to see any drama. And I have to say, I've attended many of these planning meetings, um, including as a member of the Ojai Valley MAC. And, um, they've been overwhelmed, the planning meetings were overwhelmingly positive about the project. I can think of maybe two people, which would be like two, maybe to 4% of, um, anyone who showed up at any meeting having anything negative to say about the project. Um, and the concerns that I have heard have all been addressed very thoroughly by your presentations at every stage. Um, and I, it's really encouraging to see that, you know, small changes have been made even within this demonstration time. And as to the gentleman who spoke about the petitions that he got outside of Vons, what I've noticed is that our town tends to be filled with opinionated people out on the street. But when it comes to actually participating in the democracy of it and showing up at meetings like this, um, it can often be a very different reflection of what the community is feeling and concerned about. So I would advocate that you continue the demonstration with minor modifications as listed. And, um, really just thank you all so much for your work. This is really above and beyond and I'm very proud to be in our community at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace, and thank you for showing up. Who's next? Gail.
Next, we have Robert Chap. Robert, if you're go, um, you know what, I apologize. He has the same problem with his software as, um, Betsy Watson does, so I will return to him at the end of the meeting. So next, we have Randy Levitt. Randy, if you're there, go ahead and unmute yourself and you should be able to speak.
Yes, hi. Um, my name's Randy Levitt, uh, lived here in Ojai, uh, for 14, 15 years now. And I just, uh, want to talk about, I'm, our whole family is so, uh, pro this project. Uh, we want to make Ojai better. That small stretch of the, actually that stretch of the Maricopa, Maricopa Highway has no business being here, uh, truly. On the Save Maricopa Highway people, um, it, I want to say that it's entirely and completely wrong and unacceptable to harass decision-makers in our community or anywhere else. City council members, um, editor of the local newspaper. Personal harassment has no place here in order to try to make your case loud. And I encourage you, uh, council members, not to vote from fear or worry about that ridiculousness. Um, he's, they sent an email list, I don't know, 100 people, uh, presenting as like we, we oppose, uh, the project. Not, totally not true at all. Um, the Vons petition is ridiculous. I can go there and get a petition for anything. You don't, we don't know what was said. I think it's totally meaningless. Um, the original flyers that they sent before the demo project was even approved was a, I thought it was a joke. Save the Maricopa Highway, truly? We want to save people and the environment. We don't care about saving highways. I think they've been operating under bad faith by a few people from the beginning. They try to create hysterica, they abuse the facts and distort what can be distorted. I've heard that they've been funded or received advice from even outside of California. The grant funding approval, uh, has been fabulous. It's a really unique opportunity. And I think that Ojai spending money on this project is perfect. It's what we should be spending our money for. And that's, uh, that's what I'd like to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Randy. All right, next, Gail.
Next, we have Chris Hatfield. Chris, if you're there, go ahead and unmute yourself and you can go ahead and speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm speaking in enthusiastic support of the safety enhancements. A huge factor in my family's quality of life in Ojai is that we can accomplish almost everything we need to do without a car. A study published in the Guardian newspaper yesterday found that a total of one in five deaths globally was attributable to air pollution caused by fossil fuels. Statistics like this will only worsen if we do not continue to find ways to reduce our dependence on an addiction to gasoline. One of the simplest methods of doing so is to reduce the amount of vehicle miles traveled. And in a place like Ojai with some of the most temperate weather in the world, projects that move toward that goal, like these safety improvements, shouldn't be controversial. For very good reasons, residents of the Ojai Valley are fiercely proud of the community they've built and maintained. And the irony of living, limiting travel to and from a school every day to the one mode of transportation that is primarily responsible for our climate emergency because the alternatives are too physically dangerous is shameful. We have an opportunity to create a safer and more equitable Ojai Valley that gives people a different choice than the tyranny of the automobile. And we owe it to our children, each other, and future generations to make the right choices now. The fantasy of unimpeded travel by automobile users is not more important than the safety and well-being of everyone else. I'll end my comment by commending the city council, street plans, and others involved in the project for continuing to incorporate user feedback and data in making adjustments to the project design. Safety decisions such as these must be made using data and not based on emotion and speculation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Who's up next? Gail.
Next, we have Steve Quilisi. Mr. Quilisi, if you're there, uh, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and talk.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Gail. I'd like to say first of all that I, my wife and I have walked and driven this stretch of highway on numerous occasions, most recently yesterday. I regret the amount of conflict that we see in the community here. In fact, at an, at an earlier city council meeting, the public response was so overwhelmingly anti, and you saw the numbers, 59 to 41, that one council member felt it necessary to read a pro letter at length just to try to balance the scales. I think we have four groups of people that we need to consider with this project. Pedestrians, bicyclists, drivers, and parkers. I personally find the current design very difficult, especially for drivers and parkers, and very expensive. I would propose an alternative, which I hope you will consider. It is a variation of your option three already. It consists of the following. Leave two traffic lanes each direction. Don't put in planters, don't put in extra trees, no, no more armadillos or anything like it. Dedicate parking lanes on both directions to bicyclists. You've already done that from church to the Y. Why not do it from church to El Roblar? Make parking available. The only parkers that we see are those that are going to the meadows. Use that triangular area between El Roblar and the entrance to the St. Thomas Aquinas Church and put parking in there. It can be done in gravel or DG with much less cost. This leaves lots of space for bicyclists, both directions, and preserves parking for the meadows. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. All right, next, Gail.
Next, we have Sylvie Lee. Sylvie, if you're there, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead. Sylvie Lee, are you there? Okay, I will come back to her. And so the next person we have is Kathy Lottis. And Kathy, if you're there, um, go ahead and speak. You should be able to, um, go ahead and unmute yourself and you should be able to speak.
Okay. Yes, I'm Kathy Lottis and I'm an Ojai resident. I just want to say that I strongly support this project. It's been, it has received the attention of experienced traffic engineers. It's had city staff involved and very dedicated residents. And I applaud the efforts of all of that. Really, this is the opportunity for Ojai to right a wrong. A four-lane highway does not fit with the Ojai character as far as I can see. I think all the, um, multimodal users have been very well considered. I've driven through there a number of times during various, uh, times of the day and evening. And it provides traffic calming, as other people have talked about. It's good, it's safe for pedestrians, where we've had several, um, people killed in that, that area. And I just, um, you know, I, I really commend staff for all the effort. I think that this project and the staff time that's been dedicated to it will only result in an absolutely great benefit for the community. Please approve the project to lanes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, next, Gail.
Next, we have Kimberly Rivers. Kimberly, if you're there, um, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself.
Hi, um, I am speaking in support of the demo and reducing, um, the four-lane road down to two lanes. I wanted to remind everybody and maybe inform some folks who don't know, it's been mentioned before about why this whole thing is happening. It's because of the city's duty to protect public safety. And the city and city council members have been put on notice that this is an unsafe stretch of roadway. And that the project, um, being proposed and worked out and, and fixed, is an effort to take responsibility for that. So slower and safer driving is the So slower and safer driving is the point. And a temporary inconvenience of adjusting to new traffic patterns does not supersede the need for public safety. I will say, we're a Nordoff High School family. My son will be attending there for three more years. And a longer traffic wait, I think, is acceptable and is a great motivation to walk or get on a bike to get to and from school. Something I did want to address is something Mr. Haney asked about earlier in the meeting regarding the costs. And I had reached out to city staff to clarify this for me. The project and the demo is being paid for, not by city funds. Anything additional that he was asking about is a fixed overhead for the city. So there won't be any additional costs, not paying any overtime or special costs. And it's just time for city employees that are already paid their full salary. And I hope if he has any more questions, he'll ask his great staff to clarify. So keep the demo, fix out all the quirks, and go to two lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. All right, next, Gail.
Next, we have Paul- And I apologize if I mispronounce your last name- Magulis. If you're there, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and speak. Mr. Magulis, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. Okay, I will put him back on mute. And next, we have- I'm showing David and Elizabeth Silva. And they're showing twice with both names, so I'm going to open up one of these. And David or Elizabeth, you can go ahead and speak. Go ahead and unmute yourself if you're muted, and you can go ahead.
Howdy. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Excellent. Bear with me. Sorry, we're watching in two separate rooms.
That's okay. We understand.
My husband and I want to thank the city government, council, and all volunteers for taking on this important topic. We are definitely in support of this bike lane project and hope that there's many more. It's extremely important, not only for our town, but also for our planet. We need to do all we can to get people out of their cars and encourage them to ride bikes or walk. I think a big factor, people not wanting to ride bikes in this town, which has perfect topography and climate for bike riding or walking, is that the problem is safety. People drive really, really fast in this town. I ride my bike a lot, and I'm often intimidated by the speed of cars that whiz past me. There's nothing more joyous than being a kid and being able to ride your bike around your town. And this town has had a huge increase in the number of children. Just on our street alone, on Drown, we've had- Gone from just a couple kids on our street to half the street now has children in the houses. Getting them on bikes and making it safe for them to do so is key to keeping families in this town. We need to do all we can to slow down cars and get people on bikes. Many speakers have complained about the traffic from Nordoff, but if there was a bike lane, it would encourage the students to actually ride their bikes instead of these huge traffic jams of individuals driving their children to and from school. Please support this project, and please put in more bike lanes. Thank you.
My-
Elizabeth.
You, David. Oops, sorry.
Sorry, my- I had a few things to say, but since I'm out of time, and Kimberly Rivers, who coincidentally went immediately before us, pretty much summarized everything I wanted to say. So thank you, Kimberly, and thank you, city council.
Thank you. Thanks, David. Thanks, Elizabeth. All right, next, Gail.
Next, we have Diana Blanchard. Diana, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yay. Well, hello, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight to give us the opportunity to express our thoughts. I have been so excited for tonight because I've invested plants and planters and lots of bicycle riding on the bike lanes. And yes, you guessed it, I am for this ATP project. As an avid bicycle rider for over fifty years- I know, I started when I was two, right? I believe that Ojai needs this improvement and upgrade. I ride my bicycle almost every day, also like some of the other speakers here tonight. I would like to mention that one of the many reasons why I do is to stop damaging our environment. It is at an emergency state, and we need to do our best to do everything we can to improve the situation. Keep this project in motion so that we can have traffic calming, number one. Number two, reduce the gas emissions. Save our planet. And three, have pedestrian and bicycle safety. We will still have the same roadway width, like Mr. Grant was telling us. We'll have it all there if indeed we were to ever need it back again. Let's look at how neighboring cities have done similar changes and have that same success, like Santa Barbara. They have Kent Epperson and Nancy Eckert with Santa Barbara Traffic Solutions. Let's invite them for our Ojai project. It's not really a conflict that can't be fixed. Let's come together, work out the details, and make this a green, friendly, thriving, safe town. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. All right, next.
Next, we have Jeff Otterbein. Jeff, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Thanks to everybody who's been involved in this project. I am in support of it. I feel like this- In the big picture, these are very small changes, and we actually need to go much further. Our planet is begging for more bicycles on the road. And I think this is, you know, a good start, and let's keep it up. I think that's it. I'm in support of it and appreciate the work that everybody's putting into it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate you. All right, who's up next? Gail.
Next, we have Michelle Ellison. Michelle, if you're there, you can speak now. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Ellison. I'm a resident of the city of Ojai. Thank you, city council, city staff, community volunteers, for all of your work on getting this project this far. I enthusiastically support the project for a number of reasons. First, transportation is the largest source of polluting greenhouse gas emissions in Ojai. So it's critical that we reduce vehicle miles traveled and prioritize cleaner alternatives, including biking and walking. I serve on Ojai's Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee, and reducing our carbon footprint from transportation is one of our key recommendations. Ojai has the second worst air quality in Ventura County. We'll all benefit from breathing in cleaner air, which will come with more bike use and less car use. My husband and I enjoy taking our two young children, ages five and seven, for bike rides around town, to the Meadows Preserve, to visit family and friends in Miners Oaks, et cetera, getting much-needed fresh air and physical activity. The current project makes it safer for our family to do so. I look forward to a future where our kids will be able to safely bike to Nordoff for high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, next, Gail.
Next, we have Kathy Nolan. Kathy, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good. Hi, Kathy Nolan here. Valley resident for over forty years. I raised my family here, and I now have grandchildren in the valley. I've been on the planning commission since 2010 and working on complete streets efforts since, well, about that time of 2011. So quite a few years. I'm a driver. I'm a biker and a walker. And I fully support the Maricopa Highway Demonstration Project and the ATP Project. I urge you to continue with the demonstration project for the full length of the grant contract and include the extension time so that we can get all the Nordoff students and drivers incorporated into the data. To include the full time is the very nature of a demonstration project. We need time for education, time to test and retest, and a time to comment more than once if needed and to allow time for improvements. Let's make it safe. Let's make it equitable. As more people have a chance to fully experience the project and become educated, we will have and we'll get a clearer picture of what is needed and wanted. Stakeholders include the entire community, all modes of transportation, et cetera. Allow yourselves representatives of this community time to not just walk the talk, but walk, bike, and drive the talk. Transportation is the leading sector for greenhouse gas emissions, both nationally, in the state, and in the valley. This gives us an opportunity to align with the city's efforts to sustainability and resilience, to be aligned with the Paris Climate Accord, our general plan circulation element, the Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee recommendations, state and regional public health and environmental health, reducing vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. And there was a wonderful quote in the recent Ojai Quarterly from our own council member, Paul Blatt- Excuse me, Brian Blatts. He said, "As environmentally progressive as Ojai is, we can lead and be an example and give a little from our city to help take ideas about sustainability to the rest of the world." This is an opportunity for a win-win-win project.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, next, Gail.
Next, we have Reno Rolle. Reno, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the city council, staff. Congratulations, by the way, and good evening, Mayor Styx. Again, I'm Reno Rolle. I've lived here in Ojai for just under twenty years. I'm also co-founder of Boku International, our family-owned superfood company, which operates from our headquarters right there at the gateway to town. So I first want to say that I fully respect everyone's opinions and concerns about this project. While I'm obviously strongly in favor of the project, I've made that abundantly clear. I would never want my support to be mistaken for ignorance or a lack of empathy. And speaking of empathy, while considering the potential impact of this project, I think it's really important that we remember to consider the safety, convenience, the happiness of others, as well as ourselves. Hundreds of kids and their families stand to benefit from the safe, dedicated infrastructure that will facilitate cycling to and from school. That's super important. Hundreds of community members will take to their bikes because they'll be able to commute and exercise safely. The environment, these are things we've all heard about, super important, will obviously benefit considerably as cars and trucks are replaced by bicycles and pedestrians. This is the way of the future, and the future really is now. So, you know, consider the fact that the gasoline-powered car or diesel trucks we're driving now won't even exist in a few short years. They're well on their way to obsolescence, and we'll have to pivot and adjust to this reality, just the way we've had to pivot and adjust to a lot recently. We're meeting remotely here, working in isolation. We're wearing masks everywhere we go. Things are changing. And I think we have to accept that change is really the only thing in life we can absolutely depend on and that the vast majority of the things we fear, including many of the things that were brought up this evening, never happen. If we open our minds and our hearts, if we consider the needs of others and focus on the greater good, I believe it will help us soften and bend rather than snap. We can accept or even embrace the change that will always come, no matter what. I sincerely appreciate, again, the scrutiny of all those opposed and even simply evaluating. That said, why stand in the way of-
Thank you, Reno. Appreciate that. All right, next, Gail.
Next, we have Sue Williamson. Sue, if you're there, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and go ahead and talk.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, everybody. I'm sorry I missed the presentation, so I'm not sure what kind of changes you were planning to make to it. My main problem with it is those little armadillos. I'm all in favor of the bike path, even though I don't ride a bike anymore because I've had too many accidents on your roads. But I did try to drive my pony cart down there, and those armadillos are just too much of a hazard for me to feel safe. And if I was on a bicycle or even parking, I would feel the same way. I also have questions about whether it's wise to have parking in the middle of the road. I'm not so opposed to making it a one lane with, as long as the second lane is available to be converted when needed in emergencies or a fire situation. So I don't know about the wisdom of putting trees right in the middle of what would be a second lane. So there's those modifications. But you may have already been thinking about these things and done them because I missed the presentation in the beginning. So- But I just want to make those two points about the parking and the armadillos that I think are trip points. Already, you can see where cars have run over them, and they've got marks on them. And I have seen a couple problems with people getting out of cars into the lane of traffic and having people have to come to a screeching halt. So I don't know. I think there's still some problems with it. I hope you are willing to work those out and respect the criticisms and the problems that people have raised here. I know you've put a lot of work into it, and I applaud the bicycle lane. It's been needed for a long time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. All right, next, Gail.
Next, we have Noah Schray. Noah, if you're there, you can go ahead and unmute yourself, and you should be able to speak.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. So I would just like to- Just first off, thank the council, the city council, for actually hosting this. I think it's great to get input from the community. So as a student who goes through this lane every single day, and I've been doing this also before this project has started, I can definitely say that I much prefer it. I just feel much safer going along this way. And the amount of times that I've almost been hit by a car before this change was implemented, it's just- It's kind of disappointing. So I'm really glad that this is actually being considered and that it might actually happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. Great to hear from a student. Next, Gail.
Next, we have Leah Heckler. If I'm mispronouncing your name, Heck- Hecker. I apologize. If you're there, please go ahead and- Oh, it looks like you're unmuted. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, hi, my name's Leah Heckler. I don't belong to any groups. It's really interesting how many there are here. I just live here. I live close to Ojai Avenue and the Y. I am an avid biker, and I have tried biking Maricopa Highway before. I got kissed by cars twice. And the only reason I was not hit by cars was because I dove off of my bike onto the ground, which was unpleasant. I love the new design. Whatever, I find basically nothing wrong with it. But, okay, the armadillos are ugly, but okay. And the other thing is, I drive that road, too. I time myself driving that road, and we are literally talking about a few seconds slower or faster, depending on how fast somebody in front of you goes. I'm strongly against having two lanes there. That was one of the reasons I almost got hit by a car, was exactly as somebody else described. Somebody slowing down for me, but somebody behind them trying to pull into the right lane and almost hitting me. So I really hope this stays. To me, it feels that the difference is comfort in your car versus actually potentially saving a life. So fingers crossed that this stays. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leah. Next, Gail.
Next, we have Janet Sager Naught. Janet, if you're there, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and speak.
Good evening, everyone. I am a strong supporter of the ATP and the demonstration project. I agree with so many of the positive points that have been made tonight. So in the interest of time, I just want to say I second many of those. But just wanted to add one thing. to add one thing that I learned as a person who worked in urban design firms for over 35 years, and that traffic calming has many benefits. Of course, the safety and the environmental issues are extremely important, but traffic calming also has benefits besides reducing speeding and collision. It results in streets that feel safe, that attract investment in new businesses, it improves social links, and it raises property values. There's evidence of all these things, and so I do think that those who object are just really lacking education about the true benefits that are on so many levels. And so I support this project and hope that it will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. All right, Gail, who's next?
Okay, next, we have, I'm showing Deborah Kirkland twice, so I'm going to unmute her. I don't know if that means there's two people in her household who wish to speak, but Deborah, it looks like you're unmuted. If you want to go ahead and clarify that for us, and you can go ahead and speak.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thank you so much, City Council, for this opportunity to provide input. Overall, you know, I'm an avid biker. I bike often, I bike through this area often, and I am all for promoting bike riding and improving bike rider and pedestrian safety. However, I think that the design has some improvements which would solve some problems that the hardscape that's proposed would create. So I'm hoping that a reduction in lanes could be achieved with simply painting the number-two lane with some sort of striping, providing parking on the side, providing some reflective barrier for a bike lane and painting a bike lane. I also think that if you have tried to ride from the bike lane that goes down into downtown Ojai that exists right now and cross at the Y, it's not, I don't think that this demonstration project has increased bicycle safety in that area. I think some alternative routes would be really a benefit to the overall safety of bike riders. Perhaps, you know, I always ride behind Bonds and behind Ben Franklin instead of riding on the sidewalk. So I think that might be an alternative route that could be considered as opposed to riding on the Maricopa Highway with, around all the businesses like Bonds and Ben Franklin and the hospital. So overall, I think it's a good idea, but I think some tweaks would be really great to not create more problems and just overall improve bike safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. All right, next, Gail?
Next, we have Linda Harmon. Linda, if you're there, go ahead and unmute yourself and you can go ahead and speak.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm a strong supporter of the grant. I think it's a wonderful project. I am not a biker. I am a car driver and a pedestrian. I go to the Meadow. I have a friend that lives in the area. I have a doctor in the area, so I travel it quite frequently. I also use it to go to Miners Oaks, to go to the hardware store, like many other people in Ojai. I found the entire project very well thought out. I think the input has been done really well. I think there's been a lot of outreach. I've been to, I don't know how many meetings over the years. I've lived here for 30-some years, and I think it's a great project. So I'm just giving another shout-out to the city for doing this and for Greg Grant for obtaining the grant funding for it. I'm totally 100% in support, and I appreciate the council's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. All right, next, Gail?
Next, we have Bob Quinn. Bob, if you're there, go ahead and unmute yourself. You can go ahead and speak. There, you seem to be unmuted. Bob, you can go ahead?
Yes, thank you. I'm in support of the ATP project, and I appreciate the way it continues to be refined based on what we learned from the demonstration project. Let's go ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Short and sweet. Appreciate that. All right, next, Gail?
Next, we have Andrew Ellison. Andrew, if you're there, go ahead and unmute yourself and you can go ahead and speak.
All right. Yeah, I want to thank the council, the staff, the consultants for their hard work and thoughtful consideration of this project. I've lived in Ojai for more than 30 years. I think it's always been inconsistent with the character of the village of Ojai, that in front of a school, a two-lane highway opens up, and I know the data indicates that the average speed along that corridor has been dangerously fast, and we've had fatalities as a result. In fact, my brother was hitting a crosswalk in front of Nordoff after school one day, and I'm concerned about any rush to judgment against the project until we've seen the data from the non-pandemic, sort of more typical use patterns, which will be upcoming. The pandemic has caused and coincided with massive bike and specifically electric bike adoption around the world. We need to give people an opportunity and incentive to ride during peak traffic periods, which we haven't experienced at all yet without school being in session. I remember when New York City installed bike lanes, and at that time, there was a ton of pushback initially, but now the bikes have transformed the city for the better. The residents can't imagine going back to the car-dominated mess they left behind. I'm excited that Ojai is leading and doing the due diligence to investigate the possibility of leading us into a future that is more bike-friendly and less automobile-centric. So thanks, guys. I hope the project succeeds.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, Gail, who do we have next?
Next, we have Susan Bronstein. Susan, if you're there, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and go ahead and speak. Susan Bronstein, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. There she is.
Okay, sorry, I'm here. I don't have a lot to say. I really appreciate this meeting. I appreciate everyone's opinions. The one thing that I could argue with was Tony saying that the school times when the school was coming in and letting out was only 15 minutes. I live in the neighborhood behind Bonds and Ben Franklin, and I'm telling you, it's a lot more than 15 minutes even before this project, so I'd be interested to see when school lets in exactly what the impact is then, because it took me so much longer than 15 minutes to make turns. And then the other thing I was worried about was the two-lane bike path between Correo and Ballerio, and then it goes past the high school. When you're turning left into Ballerio off Maricopa, it's really hard to see people, bikers, who go the wrong way on those bike lanes. So that might be modified because it's really scary. You have to look so many directions at one time. The other thing is driving out of Ballerio, too. So if people would follow the rules, both bikers and car drivers, it would be so good. And I don't know how we can enforce this, but that would be something to think about. So thank you very much for listening. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Thank you, Susan. You, too. All right, next, Gail?
Next, we have Sue Williamson. Sue, if you're there, go ahead and please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and speak.
Yeah, she spoke already.
Oh, she did. Oh, I apologize. I will remove her.
The reason, the reason that I did that was because when I was done speaking, I got kicked off. So, and I wanted to hear the rest of it.
Oh, yeah, unfortunately, after speakers speak, we have to remove them from the Zoom panel, but I didn't realize you'd already spoken.
Is there some way we can hear the rest of it?
Yes, you can listen to it on, City Manager Vega, do you have the email address again or the website address?
To view and not speak, it's YouTube. It's the City of Ojai YouTube page.
Okay, thank you.
And if you have any problems, you can email me. I'll help you find it.
Okay, thanks.
Next, we have Jay Simons. Jay, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself. There he is.
There we go. Thank you very much. I've been an Ojai resident for 40 years and have been a bicyclist, walker, driver through that area on numerous occasions. And my experience and how I've experienced the temporary installations is pretty much as they indicated on the data that they supplied. It has significantly reduced the speed of traffic and, from my perspective, has allowed much easier turns onto the Maricopa because of the decrease in speed. My experience is also somewhat influenced by the fact that I was a trolley driver for 10 years and drove that corridor extensively many times a day. And I can only tell you that that area was some of the most worrisome, particularly on the crosswalks, because we pull up for people crossing, and then there would be cars that would pull around. And you just watch this with really horrific observation, and as these people would come through, and they'd either slam on their brakes when they realized there was someone in the crosswalk, or they just zoomed through, and of course, the pedestrians were quite shocked. Anyway, I think it's essential for this project to go on. I'm an enthusiastic supporter, and I can only thank all of the hard work of the city council, the staff, and the contractors who did such a fantastic job with this. I also was an enthusiastic volunteer to help install this. But anyway, please go ahead. Let's implement this as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay, for your participation. All right, Gail, who's next?
Next, we have Anita Hendricks. Anita, if you're there, please go ahead and unmute yourself and you can go ahead and I think I accidentally just muted. There you are. Go ahead.
You can hear me now.
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for undertaking this project. I am concerned about the people who are unhappy with it, as well as the people who are. I, for one, am grateful because I use that. I go that way all the time. And before, when it was two lanes, I would be riding my bike as I got to near where all the cars parked, at the Land Conservancy, and I would find myself between those cars and the two lanes of cars on the other side. But oftentimes, a car would not go to the far lane, and they'd come right next to me between me and the car. It was extremely dangerous, very scary. And I had to start using the sidewalk, which is not legal, but it forced me to do that because it was so dangerous. Now, the only trouble with the improvement, which I think is better and I'm grateful for it, is now people in cars will be getting off with the cars going by. And of course, you're saying that it will be slower, and they are trying to make some more room for the, so that those people in their cars will have more room to open their door. My suggestion is for that area where the people park for the Land Conservancy, which is one of the main areas between El Obla and Nordoff, that is tight, even with the lane reduction, is to have parking at one of the nearby places, such as Nordoff, the Catholic Church, the land across the street, somewhere, having a new parking area for those people who park at the, for the Land Conservancy. Also, the other option would be to have a two-lane bike lane dedicated, like the one we have going downtown, running alongside all the way from El Obla through the front of Nordoff, all the way almost to that corner, that corner where all the park, you know, the parking, where the mall is. Also, we need to have a crossing light that can be activated by pedestrians or bicyclists at the major crossings. And, okay, anyway, thank you. I really appreciate it. It certainly made a difference in my use and hopefully for the entire town, and it contributes to saving the planet through less fossil fuel consumption. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Appreciate that. All right, next, Gail?
Next, we have Linda Garrett Garibaldi. Linda, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself. Linda, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. Unmute yourself. Okay, I'm gonna put her back on mute. We have, that's actually it, except for there are two people who are still showing, waiting to speak, that I'd called on earlier that didn't unmute, so I will go ahead and try them again if you'd like.
Sure, that'd be great. Thanks. Wow, that went so fast.
Yeah. The first one is Paul Magoulis. Paul, if you're there, I'm gonna ask you to, there you go. Go ahead, you can go ahead and speak.
Yeah, thanks. So, yeah, I'm totally for this project. I think it's great. And I would like to say that we have a high school on a highway. I don't know how, you know, they can coexist safely, those two. Also, I feel that the Nordoff High School is kind of not really very integrated into its surrounding, because of, well, I mean, the kids just have to get in the car, they have to be driven there, then they have to be picked up, driven back, you know, that it's like it's a different bubble. And I think we, we're in a time where we have an e-bike revolution happening, and I think that is kind of going to be the future of transportation locally, locally especially. And I envision a bike route that will join not only that area over there, but a bike route that could join maybe the center of Ojai with Nordoff and Miners Oaks. And that will create an integration and will make it more of a, it'll feel more like a community, and less like a divided community. Well, that's all. Thank you very much. Keep on the great work. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. All right, one more, Gail?
So I'll go ahead and try Linda Garrett Garibaldi one more time. Linda, if you're there, if you want to go ahead and speak, please unmute yourself.
Gail, while she's unmuting, can I say something? Robyn Gerber had to leave, but she wanted to be on record that she was in support of the project.
Okay.
Susan?
Okay, thank you. And then the only other person I'm showing, waiting to speak, is Sylvie Lee, and I'm not sure if I had brought her in before. I don't have her marked off. Sylvie, if you're there, please go ahead and unmute yourself. You can go ahead and speak. Okay, then she's the last commenter that we have, so...
Excuse me, Gail, what about Betsy Watson? Is she gone, too?
She left the meeting. I was going to come back to her, too, but she has left the meeting.
Thank you.
I see Sylvie's name on the screen again.
I know she wanted to speak.
Oh, that, I misspoke. That's Sylvie Lee. Oh, she is unmuted. Sylvie Lee, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, so I feel like I'm just echoing a lot of what everyone has already said. I want to thank everybody for their efforts with this project. I feel I'm definitely in favor of it. I feel like as someone who lives off of the Maricopa Highway and really close to Bonds, that I've seen a lot of positive things happen since the installation, a lot more bikers using it, a lot, I feel safe as a pedestrian walking down the highway and crossing the highway, and I feel like cars are being more alert and slowing down, so all the things that people have already noted and made a point of stating, and obviously, that's been the focus of this project. And I look forward to seeing more people use it and see more people actually bike, especially students to Nordoff, which would greatly reduce probably what people are concerned about, which is the amount of traffic at the time of pickups and drop tops. which is the amount of traffic at the time of pickups and drop-offs, which I think would be, you know, all around healthy for everybody if more students biked. And I think that's the main point of this project. So I thank everybody for their efforts and I look forward to seeing it unfold.
Thank you, Sylvie. Thanks for participating. And thanks to everybody for showing up and caring so much. What a, what a great joy it is to be part of a community that's so committed and dedicated to and cares so much, so, thanks. And thank you, Gail, and James Hahn behind the scenes for masterminding that so gracefully. Really appreciate you both. All right, so we can move forward to discussion?
Mayor, may I request that this might be a good time for just a short pause?
That's great. Okay. Gail, may we take a three-minute break?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Gail, can you see everybody? Gail?
Yes, I can. Or, well, no, Councilmember Wirick, there he is.
He is? Okay. Are we ready?
Let me see. Yeah, I think we're ready. Our Councilmember Blatz, there he is. So, yes, we are ready.
All right, so, ready for discussion?
We're closing the public meeting.
Yes, closing the public meeting.
I have a little question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Start with something small.
Sure.
I'm curious, Tony or Greg, when you're riding your bike towards the Y and you get to the end of the Maricopa Avenue there, there's a sign saying "End of Bike Trail", when you're right at the place where you would cross over to the Valley Bike Trail. So I'm kind of curious why there wouldn't be sort of a direction saying, "Valley Bike Trail, cross here" as opposed to an "End Bike Trail" sign. I find that, just a little detail, that's confusing, especially for people that don't live in town.
Yeah, that's a really good point. And, you know, just something that came out of the Caltrans review process, they said, you know, at the start of the bike lane, you have to put a bike lane start and at the end, bike lane ends. But I think that's a good edit and a suggestion that we can make to them and push back on that.
Or even just if it's required for Caltrans regs, would it prevent us from having another sign saying "Cross here" for Valley Trail?
Not at all, not at all.
And we could at least do that without waiting for Caltrans approval, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
This is a small thing.
Mayor, I would add to that also the fact that we have no, nothing connecting anyone as they come across the Y from the existing bike trail. Again, you have the same signage there on the sidewalk. It creates a ton of confusion. It also puts a ton of people on the wrong side of the highway.
I'd like to mention that we did look at putting a dedicated bike crossing from Rotary Park over to northbound Maricopa, but it was extremely expensive. And it required re-rigging a lot of the traffic lights on there. It was approaching $800,000.
And the signs too.
Sign is cheap.
Well, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Suzanne. I'll get back to Greg on that comment.
Anyway, first I'll start by thanking the public for their comments, all their comments. I really want you to know that you were heard. And I would like to address what Dennis McCarthy and possibly Rebecca Kurtner, maybe others mentioned about the anger that some members of the community have. And the fact of the matter is that anger is not unusual when there's a lane reduction. Every, when it has happened in other communities, it's just because it's a change. And I communicated with Supervisor Matt Laverre and he mentioned to me that he saw that same anger, that a terrible level of anger in Ventura when they did a lane reduction on Loma in front of the hospital. And then they did another lane reduction in front of the government center. People just could not believe that in front of a hospital, you would do a lane reduction. And now, I think, three years have gone by, maybe longer, and everybody loves it. It has calmed the traffic, the anger has dissipated. That's my understanding. And the same, same thing happened to our new Transportation Secretary, Pete Buttigieg, I always say, yeah, Pete Buttigieg. He's our new Transportation Secretary. And there was an article in the Washington Post and the title was "The Decades Old Assumption That Streets Are For Cars Above All Else Is Being Challenged." And he also described the anger when he changed the traffic patterns in his community. And people just couldn't believe that it was a good thing to go from 40 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. But as time passed, the whole community began to, you know, business thrived. There was much more activity and, you know, people were communicating because they could walk. And there was a huge paradigm shift. And that's what this is really about. There are many, many details that we need to work out. You know, the parking, whether the Nordoff side should be two lanes, what to do about the hospital, there's concerns. And we're busy reaching out to all the stakeholders in this. But it's about, as an elected official, I feel that I have to think ahead. I have to have a vision for what this town will be like in, by, in 20 years from now. We're gonna be working on the general plan. What do we want to see in the future? We don't, we don't really want a four-lane highway that's inevitably going to be clogged with more and more cars unless we make it possible for people to switch to another mode of transportation. And that does not just include bicycles, but it also includes improved public transportation. So we're in the middle of a huge change that is, that is naturally uncomfortable. And I hope that we can work together to work out all the glitches. And I'll wait for my colleague to speak and then I have some specific questions, mainly concerning the parking, but I'll pause here. Thank you.
Greg, I'd like to see that study that you just mentioned. I'd like to see the study regarding $800,000 to reconfigure some type of access in a painted crosswalk to get people across that street that you said you studied. Can you get that to me?
I'm sorry, there wasn't a study. It was a discussion with Caltrans.
So then, okay.
If there's no, oh.
I would like to say, to me, it's quite meaningful and significant, the calming effect that we're already seeing in the data. Safety really is a function, an inverse function of speed. And I've always thought of Ojai as a, as a two-lane town. You know, that's, that's kind of how I've always, I've always viewed it. And this experience of serving on this council and digging into why this was put here and the whole history of it. And it's been very enlightening to me that, as I've said before, history teaches us lessons. And this was, this was built from the, during the four-liner mentality. That was, that was stopped in mid-century, mid-20th century by the people of Bill Miley's generation. Bill Miley's given me a real education about the history of how that happened. And I said before, and I'll say again, I think a couple of the most significant character-defining parts of Ojai history was, first, of course, the reinvention of the town in 1917, but the applying the principles of the City Beautiful Movement. And the other was stopping the freeways. You know, I'm a third-generation native Californian and Southern Californian and I have, I've been keenly aware of what was lost when the Southern California gave up the largest public transportation system in the world at that time with the red car system. People forget that. This region had the largest public transportation system on earth. And we gave it up. We gave it up because, and as has been well-established in history, a combination of General Motors and I believe it was Goodyear Tire bought up the Pacific, set up holding companies and bought up the red car lines for the purpose of dismantling it and selling buses and tires and started the sprawl movement. And it's to our credit in this city, to Bill Miley's generation, that it didn't happen here. It certainly happened and ruined a lot of quality of life in a lot of cities all over Southern California. And so we have a little remnant here. And I think intelligently and thinking clearly about the best design is a great step forward. And the two principles of separating multimodal safely is important. You know, we've heard that bicycles were being forced onto the sidewalk. We're not just helping, under the old design, the four-lane design, we're not just helping the safety of bicycles, we're helping the safety of pedestrians. The more friendly you make multimodal, the more use you get. It induces the use. And we're not seeing the dwell rate go up. We're seeing the elimination of the speeders, which is the combination of calming and separation. I think we keep those two principles in mind and think about how to do things like maybe moving the armadillos or, and so on and so forth. But I gotta tell you, my lessons and read of history is that the two principles of calming and separation, traffic calming and separation are really important. And I think we're already seeing the benefits of it. So just wanted to say, and then I'll find, I'll find, I'll end with one quick question. Did I hear right, Tony, that we think we can move the little armadillos a little bit towards the bike lane and give a little more space for cars opening their doors? Did I hear that right as a possibility?
I mean, I think it's possible. I defer to Greg on that, actually.
Okay, I think that we had, I'll check the length, but I think we were approaching excessive length for what the fire trucks said they needed. They didn't need that much room. So we probably move it over. We're gonna see if the foot and see if Caltrans would agree as well.
That might be a safety improvement, still maintaining separation and calming. And also, the planters, we could, we could remove some of the planters and provide a little easier parking under the current design, right?
We completed that just recently. We've removed every other planter.
So I appreciate that. All right, I'm sorry. I just, I felt I ought to just state my overall philosophical position about this whole matter. Thank you.
What I would like the public to do is take time to read all the public comments. I believe there were over 200 public comments that came in today or in the last few days on this topic. It'll be posted on the city website because that way we can learn to understand each other. I think it's important to read, that's why I requested that they be posted. I'm hoping that people will read them. And then I wanted to address a couple of things that speakers said. There was at least, there was one woman, when, when we talked, who thought that emergency vehicles were gonna go down the bike lane. My understanding is that we're talking about if there's a fire or something. They're not just suddenly gonna, going to appear and go down the bike lane. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. It's not just going to, you know, normally, when you're in a two-lane road, if you hear the siren, you pull over. And this road will be the same. You, you know, you find a place to pull over, but the emergency vehicle is not suddenly going to go into the bike lane. The bike lane is for, for situations like the Thomas Fire. That's, is that correct?
That's correct. Evacuation.
The public to understand that. And then the other question that has come up is about the two-way, the possibility of extending, there's confusion about why we have a two-way bike lane from, is it Valerio or, you know, just past Bonds to the, you know, to Nordoff. And I think we should make that clear to the public. The purpose is for the students, so they don't have to cross twice to go to Nordoff. And also, because more, because people naturally coming from the bike trail, if they're, especially if they're going a short distance, they're not going to cross and then try to cross again to go to that next street. So people are still riding on the sidewalk or finding their way. We, you know, there, what's the word? We, we have an unofficial two-way bike lane travel pattern already, especially when I see, you know, kids, you see groups of kids, you know, in, both in the bike lane on the sidewalk. So at some point, I, that's why I was thinking we could pull up the slide to clarify that. That was one question that was asked. And then the other question was, why don't we have the? And then the other question was, why, um, don't we have the parking right at the curb? Why don't we have the cars and then the bike lane? And that, there is an explanation, but I, I think it would be good for the public to hear it. And if you can do it without pulling up the slide, but if we, I thought if we pulled up that, that's, that first, it was the first slide, Greg, that you presented that I thought would be a good one to kind of show the public why we have it and then discuss the possibility of the bike. And while, and while, 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 um, we're discussing that, the, the hospital is concerned about having a bike lane on the opposite side, on the hospital's side. But the fact of the matter is that with or without bike lanes, bicycles are going to be on both sides of this, of the, of, of, um, Maricopa Avenue, they're going to be on both sides. So we might as well make it safe and figure out how to warn by, you know, it's probably going to be the more experienced cyclists that if, that are maybe going all the way up Maricopa into the mountains that are going to be on that side. And just make sure that they're aware that this is a hospital and there's emergency vehicles coming out. Because even if we didn't put a bike lane on that side, which I don't think Caltrans would allow anyway, there's going to be bicycles because legally they can be on both sides of the street. Yeah. So, so, um, and then someone thought, well, if there's trees in the road, then how are the emergency vehicles going to access? But there's, you can see from this picture that there's room. Right? There's space. If, if, if we had a, another fire, which probably we will, uh, cause it's, uh, you know, it's part of the cycle here. Uh, the, 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 um, fire trucks could park there, correct? And if they needed to move through there, or we could open up so that cars could evacuate on both sides. That's correct, right?
Right. And we had originally put, uh, forty foot between the planters at the request of the fire department. And now we're looking at increasing that to roughly double that up towards eighty feet, which would be plenty of room to traverse. That's a test that the fire department just asked for. They, they didn't try driving from the main driveline into the detour lane. They did it at really obvious break points. So we're talking about doing it between, uh, the planters as well, just to make sure that they can do that readily.
Yeah.
I do want to remind you that, uh, yeah, the chance, that would only happen if the main lane was blocked, which, uh, was highly unusual. But obviously the idea of bicycles being in the lane, you know, the, the fire engines and so on would have their siren on and all that.
Yeah, they would, they would go onto the sidewalk logically. If they're during a fire, there's, it would be unusual for any bicycles to be, you know, evacuating in, in that lane. Where was, I was going somewhere with this. Let me gather my thoughts.
Could I, I'd like to add one thing, Susan. I reached out to Chief Lorenzen and he, um, oh, feels confident that it's safe. That's what he said to me. And, and he communicated with Gary Monday, Monday and, um, John McNeil, so.
And we, and today we, uh, James, we received a letter today, right, from the fire chief? Someone from the, is James still here?
Yes, yes, we did. We received a letter today. Yeah.
Maybe we could post that letter with our public comments so the public could see it.
Yeah, I think we could do that. I'll confirm with them that, that I, they provided it to us for us to share today, so I'm assuming it's public, but we'll confirm that with them. But essentially they said, uh, that this project has no significant impact on their emergency response.
But James, can we get, um, all public agencies that are, um, that are all out of this street? Can we get statements from all of them and post them all?
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll do that.
Well, we have.
And we get an evacuation plan also?
Yeah. And we have letters from, uh, the water. We have several letters already. Maybe that would be good if we got permission to post them, we would assure the public that we're working with all these different, um, entities.
Yeah, we, we can reach out. The, the one thing I'll note about the water letters, I do believe that that was stated, that that wasn't the, the position of the entire board.
Okay, okay. But so, so looking at this, um, to, can, can you, uh, explain to the public why you wouldn't put the car parking right against the curb? And then the bicycles, where that tree is, I guess. Now, how would you do it? You know, because we're trying to avoid conflict between open car doors and, uh, either cars or bicycles.
But that eliminates separation, that's the problem.
Yeah, that eliminates the separation. So that's the right, if, if the public really looks at this picture, I think they would see the logic of our thinking, you know, that it would help. And then as the, um, you know, I, I hope as a council and, and we can, I'm not ready to make a, a firm decision either way about the two-way bike, my, my personal preference. And from observing the, the habits of, of, especially of, of kids riding back and forth from the school is that we need a two-way bike lane on the Nordhoff side. And normally I wouldn't advocate for that because I'm a big believer in following the, the, you know, the trap, the rules of the road, which is to go in the same direction as cars. And that's what I've done personally for the last sixty-five years. I've ridden my bike since I was seven years old. And so that makes sixty-five years all over the valley and I grew up in Miners Oak, so I'm very familiar with this route. And I rode my bike to Nordoff and Matilah and all of that. So, um, yes, I would like to, uh, if I, I would like to make a motion that we go with, with, um, you know, I know we're not through discussing, but I would be in favor of, uh, option number one with the, or, and I don't know if that's one or two, if I add, um, the possibility of a, a two-way bike lane, if we could do that during our test to see how it would work, if it would work. You know, if we could make it safe for both the bicycles and not confuse, uh, people coming in, you know, crossing the, the Maricopa Avenue there. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? I think that's all I have from right now. Thank you.
Well, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, are we ready, ready for a vote?
No, I, I.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see you, Ryan. Go ahead, Ryan.
Well, I, I want to say a couple of things. Um, one, I, I, I appreciate all the, the public feedback we've gotten. There's a lot of things that have been said on Nextdoor and Facebook and other places that are just not true. And the biggest, the biggest non-true factor is the idea that this council's already made up its mind. I've seen accusations of people lining their pockets. I have seen just some real vitriol towards all of this. And it's frankly not appropriate and there's no truth to most of it. There's a large difference of opinion and let's all figure out how to do this the best way we can. But let's calm down on the idea that the whole council's made up its mind or that we didn't just sit here taking three hours worth of public comment because we don't care or we aren't listening. And I think that we need to, um, look at the survey information a lot more distinctly than just the public comment. Because obviously this project is designed to have a mechanism for communicating back to us that is not cumbersome with Zoom and one evening and all the other things. Anybody could make any comment at any time. So there's clearly a, a very divisive opinion about various aspects of this project. I am one hundred percent for doing something on Maricopa Highway. I also am for us giving the opportunity to the public to be able to see what might be a different demonstration. I mean, we have procured some extra grant money and I, I, I am all in favor of demonstrating different aspects and different options to the public so we can get feedback from them. And they can decide what they like more and what they don't like as much. I, if, if we're just talking about demonstrating things, why would we not want to make more available to the public for them to be able to consume and understand if, if it's not costing us any more money? So I, I do think that that's an appropriate thing. If we have the option to do that, we ought to consider it. And I don't know why we would. I think that's a good idea. I obviously think there are some other flaws that I don't know the answer to that we know are there and they're not really being addressed and it's, it's quite difficult at this point. Specifically, traffic out of Nordoff has never, I've never been convinced or compelled that it's not a serious problem. We can't test it right now with the Nordoff situation. We have had this discussion many times. And the answer is, oh, we had data from before, it's fifteen minutes long. You know, and the analogy of it's two lanes coming in. It's like a two-inch pipe with a four-inch pipe in the middle, you're only getting two inches of water in there. But I'm really concerned that every day at Nordoff and as someone who went there and knows what the traffic is like coming out of that parking lot, that when you take a tank full of cars and put it in that four-inch pipe and unload it, it's going to, if you only got two inches of pipe, right, that's going to fill up what we have out there and it could cause additional delay. Especially because the linchpin of the entire Nordoff ingress egress was supposed to be taken care of with a separate entrance that is now off the table as far as I'm aware. And the school district has said they're not willing to entertain that. So I'm, I'm very concerned that, that the Nordoff side of this could be very problematic. And I don't think that saying it's fifteen, only fifteen minutes in the morning, it, it was more than fifteen minutes when I was going there. And I rode my bike there a gazillion times and I've ridden my bike all around this town and I never thought it was all that dangerous. So I do come from a standpoint of, I don't think there was a lot of, uh, bicycle safety issues throughout the community. Except for one location, which none of this touches over in front of, uh, kind of in front of Matilah, coming down to the Y. That's the scariest part. But I do really like one new idea. And I think that's important because the parking along Maricopa Highway has always kind of perplexed me. Nobody was clamoring for more parking spots before. Uh, I, I don't know any functional reason why if you want to go to the land conservancy land, you can't just park at the high school where that parking lot is never full. It was engineered aggressively large for a student body that's not there. But I do think it's very important to lengthen those parking spots. I thought from the original design, and I remember I think talking about it, that they would not require people to back in. I have seen, I've been on Maricopa Highway and people are trying to back in and parallel park into those spots and it is a mess. And people are pulling up right to them and then they're trying to back up. It happens on Ojai Avenue as well. But for this project and the number of parking spots we need, I absolutely agree, they should be the, the length where you can pull in forward without having to back in. And then they're just really long parking spots. The other one is that they're not wide enough. I mean, I don't know how much space we can gather, but I, I have to be honest, I parked there and I, I didn't feel comfortable in that spot with how close the cars were. I know getting on the passenger side wouldn't have been a big deal, but on the driver's side, it just didn't feel correct. And on top of that, I think.
That's why I asked about moving the armadillos.
Yeah, I'm with you. I mean, yeah. And these are the things I'm, I'm, I'm just want to say, you know, I, I agree, I agree a hundred percent. These are, were on my list and I was really happy to hear what we did about, uh, hear about some of them. Cause I really think if, if we are going to keep, if we are going to keep parking there, which I don't necessarily say I'm a hundred percent for, but if we are, I think it's imperative that we lengthen the spots so you can pull in straight. There's enough space horizontally so you don't feel cramped. And I think the, oh, one of the overall reactions that I've gotten a sense out of, because I had this too, is it just feels kind of claustrophobic when you're driving in that area? One, because it's changed, but two, Nordoff is set way back from the road. Then you get to the land conservancy area, it's set way back, the party property is completely empty. It feels strange having open, such wide open space and having the lanes narrowed so much. I think that's part of just kind of, uh, uh, the, the adverse reaction people are having. And I, I, I would like to see us ways to widen that up. I, I don't think we need necessarily a bidirectional bike lane on, um, on the, the Nordoff side. If kids are going to and from school at that time of day, everything is slowed down anyway. There's going to be people walking and, I mean, we used to have to park off campus and walk across every morning, so I was very used to it. But, uh, if you get down in front of Nordoff and cross at the Nordoff entrance, uh, that seems to me to be a, a safe place. I mean, if you can't cross at the crosswalk that's in front of a school, that seems like it's, that, that would be the place I think we'd want people crossing as much as possible. So I, I, I see there being some real, you know, cleanup items, but I also, I, I just want to say, like, I, I, I support us if we can, doing an, an alternative demonstration. I, I don't care how significantly it changes. If we have money that we can use to demonstrate different things and then even if it's a big change, why not provide that to the public for them to give us feedback on? Why not see it in action and, and be able to identify what's good and bad out of various designs? And, and whether that means not closing the lane as an alternative design, but making sure we have dedicated bike lanes on each side that are safe. Um, I, I'm curious to see how that would look without the parking there. I'm curious to see what that would be. So I, I would be in favor with the money we have of, of, um, not just dialing this in a little bit better, but on demonstrating something, uh, different so we can get better feedback.
So Mayor.
Andy.
As a fellow pipe layer, and Ryan talking about irrigation lines, no, I'm joking, you guys, but the, the interesting thing about this whole discussion is no one has said they don't want bike lanes. I didn't see it in the survey. The survey said they didn't like what was being demonstrated, but the majority of the people in the survey said they wanted a bike lane. So in the comments we heard tonight, we're obviously all in favor of what is there. And all of us have heard the opposite of what is there, it's completely unlike. So there's a balance that we, that we need to provide here. And, and so I'm kind of in agreement with Ryan on this and I hadn't thought about it. We've already got this lane closure and we already got this parking that we could modify. And we've got a five-foot buffer and we've got a bike lane. Why don't we take the hospital side? Why don't we take the east side of this road and create a standard bike lane with a buffer and put the two lanes back in? I don't know if that'd be too confusing, but I think it's a thought. The other thought I want to get to is getting back to this, teaching children how to ride bikes. I'm lost while we would want to teach children to ride against traffic. I'm lost at that. Because I see it all over town. I see parents showing their children what side of the street not to ride on. I see parents teaching their children to cut diagonally across streets. And I see parents teaching their children not to stop right through stop signs. So now we're going to say we want to encourage children to ride bikes to school, but we're not encouraging them to ride the bikes properly. So that's a concern. That's why, um, for me, getting, you know, when I see people at the cor- at the corner of Vons and they want to go across the street to attach themselves to the existing bike lane, they're riding with traffic and now they have a destination, they know they're going to take that bike lane and go into town. When they're coming from town up to the thirty-three, now they have no way which way to go, so they're going to go the same way that they go to the bike lane. And that, again, is on the wrong side of the, of traffic. So I don't know the message that we're sending, but it, to me, we're clearly not sending the right one. And, um, again, if we have additional funding, I'm not, um, I don't think it would be eight hundred thousand dollars, but I think we could have someone take a look at that why and actually address how can we get people properly across that street and in a manner that puts them on the right side of the street so they're riding the bikes properly. And again, as a past parent taking their children to school and as a person who works in the community, my observation during children being dropped off and children going to school, Ryan's absolutely right. The main walking or, or area that people cross is at church. So taking children from Ojai and sending them up the right side of the street, taking them to church and giving them a crosswalk, to walk their bike across or to walk themselves across, I, um, I think that's the way to go. Now, that's regarding the bike things. I still have a couple of concerns and I wrote a, an op-ed into the, uh, or, or, uh, just an article into the Ojai Valley News. And I, you know, I brought up a lot of things that I had concerns with and they were touched on a little bit here about getting officials and getting things signed off. And I'm glad that we're all doing our homework. Betsy, I'm glad that you're talking to the fire department. I'm, I'm, I hope you, you're talking to the police department. I'd like to see anything and everything that, that we get from these entities in writing. So we have not seen anything from the school board in writing. We've not seen anything from the hospital in writing. We've not seen anything from the churches in writing. We've not seen anything from the water districts in writing. We haven't seen any. We haven't seen anything from the sanitation district in writing. So we should be procuring all this information and we should be posting it. Because their concerns are as great as the rest of the community's concerns. Um, public outreach, I know it's difficult. We've got three thousand people in the Miners Oak District that have not been reached out to. They're gonna be impacted by this more than almost anyone that I can speak of that lives downtown. Greg, have we ever reached out to Miners Oaks?
You're muted.
Uh, sorry, uh, we certainly advertise in the newspaper. Uh, as the primary means of outreach and then we've used our, uh, Facebook and, uh.
Do they have Mac meetings?
Uh, I know Miners Oaks does, I'm not sure, I don't, I'm not sure if Miners Oaks does, uh, my Oakview does for sure.
So, that's what I'm saying, there, there's, there's more to be had and then getting back to the original question with Tony. Um. There's just more data we need. And fortunately, we're gonna, looks like we're gonna have plenty of time to collect it. Um, but the information that I was asking earlier, I s- I think that we, we, I believe that we need it. And we need it sooner than later. Um, and Greg and Tony, that would be any reports that you're sending to Caltrans, I believe we should have copies of. As a council and that the public deserves to see also. Um. We can do that as long as we're given that information. And, and again, um, breaking down this data, um, pre-COVID, COVID. Now, after COVID. Um, I would love to see all the data that we're gonna, uh, bring up from that. Um, because. You know, the increase in ridership and the increase in walking has a direct correlation with COVID. And, and I'm not gonna say it's gonna go back to what it was. But I'm gonna say that there probably will be a significant drop off. If, if the world ever returns back to normal, but. And, 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 but that doesn't, uh, that to me doesn't. You know, I'm not gonna weigh that, I'm just saying, but that's information we should have. Yeah, um, but I don't know if we'll ever get that. So. Those are, those are the things that I'd like to see and I'm in agreement with Ryan, if we can try and do that. And then there's one other thought. That I've talked to Councilman Wirick about this, while we have some, um, significant additional funding. And that's to actually address. The whole conversation we've had regarding ATP has been Maricopa Highway. And the reality is there's two highways that are gonna be impacted by this. And Councilman Wirick and I have been talking about how we could look at some type of downtown lighting. And, uh, and what we could do to get some, something Greg, some form of. Um, information or investigation as to what it would take to actually. Put some type of sensory devices into existing lighting, maybe add more lighting, we definitely need more, we need better crossing downtown.
And safer pedestrian crossings downtown.
Yeah, uh, uh, I, I mean, there's more issues downtown and as I look at the funding mechanism, as I look at the funding period. We're spending a lot more there than we are in Maricopa Hi- Maricopa Highway. And in the past, that was my argument, that I wanted to see more money spent downtown versus the highway. But now that there's another one point six million dollars being thrown our way, there's nothing preventing us from actually looking at this. And looking at some of the serious questions that weren't asked. In the original complete streets evaluations, because I think they were looking more at the transportation side, whether it be. Pedestrians walking, people riding bikes or, um, traffic mitigation by slowing things down. So I think there's some opportunity to look at other things and I'd hate to, uh, not utilize it. Within the next six months as we provide, as we get more information. And before we enter that ninety-five percent design. And, um, Greg, I know in the past you've said that we couldn't. Redesign. But my, um, inquiries tell me we can. And as long as they're associated to the three functions of the ATP, we can pretty much do anything we want. So our hands are not tied if we wanna do additional things. To make this ATP plan more beneficial to the community. So I know the, 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 um, the pressure is on the thirty-three. But the reality is we've got the thirty-three and the one fifty corridor. And we have a multitude of things that we need to look at and we haven't even addressed. Anything on the one fifty and there are a lot of, again, concerns about curb extensions. And, um, things of that nature that the public. Um, we know in the first go around on curb extensions hated them and in the second go around isn't much happier with them. So we still need to actually look at the one fifty, maybe have some type of community meeting on that too.
Randy, okay, Susan, before, just, I just wanna add, Randy, I spoke to Tiffany and Hadi from the hospital yesterday and they, they're both supportive, they. Have s- some suggestions clearly, so.
So again, I'd appreciate that Mayor, if they put it in writing and, and there, there's another aspect of this. That I talked to our city attorney about and, and I just wanna be. Um, I, I think we all, I think everyone needs to understand this. Um, if there's an accident or an incident on that highway. We're all directly responsible for it. And I believe as you get into the mitigation of whatever happens. There could be different weights placed on different entities and what they did and how they did, um. In their involvement with this ATP project. Now, I'm not gonna get into the nuts and bolts of it, um, cause it'd probably be too da- too deep and I probably would misrepresent it. But let's understand, in the last incident that occurred. The city of Ojai paid more than Caltrans did. And there were probably reasons for that, that we could probably discuss in private versus putting all these numbers out there in the public arena. Um, but having said that. That's why I'm adamant about all of these entities putting in writing. Their concerns, their needs. Have them address, again, it's, it's real easy for someone to say, oh yeah, I'm for it. Yeah, it's, well, I'm for it until I get sued over it. So let's get it in writing so that we're all on the same page. Now I see Bri- I see Ryan's lawyer hat going on and I know Matt's lawyer hat's on. But I'm just saying, if we get something in writing, it's better than a verbal, oh yeah. Oh yeah, 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 I like it, I love it.
Yeah, and fairness Randy, it doesn't exist, if it's oral, it doesn't exist. I mean, I, not that anybody's lying to anybody, but you know, if one of these agencies. If the situation arises and. Something happens and, you know, and the school district says we never supported this and it's not in writing. Then they didn't support it, that's just.
We'd be fully not to.
As your city attorney, that is correct, anything in government must be in writing else it is not as reliable. Uh, and is often disavowed when litigation is filed later on.
This has been patient.
Yes, this was.
I'm, I'm on equal time. Okay, let us, uh, let's cut to the chase, okay? We all know that Randy would like to go back to the four lane highway and have the bike lanes on both sides. The danger of doing that is remember this is a Caltrans right of way. And if we go backwards, I don't think we can go back. To exploring, I mean, I think there's great risk and I would not be in favor of that kind of an, an experiment. And then secondly. We have to remember why we're doing this, we're not doing this. For this, for people that are experienced cyclists, we're doing this for families with children. For the people living in that area that, oh, there's, um. Like, there's a lot of older people in that area that need a protected bike lane. There's all, there's that new develop, the, the, the housing for seniors on Met- on Elro Blar. And Randy's point that we're teaching kids the wrong thing. If we have a two-way bike path, we already have a two-way bike path. From downtown Ojai to the, to Ventura. That does not mean that when you get off that bike path that you don't obey the rules of the road. We are sorely lacking, a truly bicycle-friendly community has bicycle education in the schools. There's even the issue of, of having a, a license that you have proficiency. You know, what we have right now is anarchy, our tourists is lucky that there haven't, hasn't been, anybody hasn't been killed. But the, this is a, what we're, what the plan that is in place now is for all ages and abilities. That includes, in Europe, you see people age over ninety-five riding a bike because it's safe and they've done it all their life. We're talking about creating a healthier community. Furthermore, the answer to the Nordoff traffic jam is not to make it easier. For all the parents dropping off their kids, those are all young people that need to be educated that we're in the midst. Of a mass of climate change, the, what is this Dixon, what, help me out Mayor Betsy. There, you know, we're in, in, in the process of killing ourselves, okay? There's a hidden cost to this way of life, if Randy is so concerned about finances. Look at the hidden cost of air pollution, it's killing people, you need to, I think, you need to see the connection. Between personal health and planetary health.
Why don't you do me a favor, why don't you do me a favor and stop lecturing to me and start talking to ATP? I don't appreciate it.
Okay, I didn't mean for it to be that way, but you're the one that at the beginning of the meeting was so concerned about the, the. Financial aspect of.
And I still am.
Okay, fine, thank you, I, I'll, I'll try not to mention your name, but.
By the way, that was Ryan and me that wanted to go back to the original concept.
Yes, I'm aware of that and there's.
Just say Randy.
Okay, Randy and Ryan, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm sorry if I was at all disrespectful, I truly am. But that we have a motion on the floor, uh, for the first option, let me, uh, let me have a, a look at it. Um.
We have a motion that's been seconded.
Been seconded, that's, uh, I meant to add that. And that's to continue with the current demonstration project design. With minor modifications to design as described in attachment C. This approach has already been designed and reviewed with Caltrans and is the default approach and budget. Staff expects this approach to provide the greatest benefits to bicycle and pedestrian safety and traffic calming. And to that I would add that there be a this, that there be some, um. Way to discuss outside of this meeting, whether it is possible. And practical and safe to explore extending the bike lane two ways. And see how that works out.
Point of inquiry, Mayor.
Okay.
Would, would that mean that your motion is? To have staff come back with a feasibility study? Of extending the two lane, is that what the motion is, rather than directing it be done, but the staff come back with a feasibility analysis of that? Is that the mo- is that what your motion is?
That sounds good because, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted, I wanted to clarify, cause I, that's what I would be okay with.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, and I have some other stuff to say, but I think Ryan had his hand up for.
Ryan? Bill?
Um, a couple of things. Um. One is that, uh, uh, you know, Randy, that one of my concerns about. Um. Experimenting going back to two lanes is we have some very strong evidence. That the. Two lane is safer. It reduces speeding. So I would be very, um, I think, you know, you and I have talked about safety and I, and I think one of the things that we're really. Excited about is that we may be able to do both, we can have safer on the thirty-three avenue corridor as well as the one, the, uh, the Ojai Avenue corridor. Um, it's not e- e- either or with the supplemental funding, I, I think that's really exciting, cause we know those. At a dark night, rainy night, those pedestrian crossings downtown need improvement. But I would be, I would be, in the interest of safety, I would wanna. Go backwards on that, now that we have data that it's safer. Uh, to have the two lanes. The other thing I wanna just raise up as a point, cause it, it's always bothered me. You know, if you, if you look at a property, it, it, let's just forget. Particular property or let's just say in general. If you have a property owner that involves a lot of ingress and egress with cars. Generally, you consider that property owner as being responsible for their queuing. On their property. It's not viewed as responsible to by design have queuing on the public right of way. And so I'm, I'm not sure why. In some ways we. We don't put that expectation on the, on the school district, they've got, as Ryan mentioned earlier. A huge open parking area. And why they wouldn't by design. Have all the queuing. Be on the property. Rather than. Inappropriately using a public right of way as a queuing area. Um, that was, that's an expectation we would put on any other property owner. And I'm not sure why we don't put that expectation on the, uh, school district. So I just wanted to kind of. Get that off my chest a little bit, cause it's always bothered me.
Ryan?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't know, Bill, I mean, it. At Topa Topa, they use the entire neighborhood as queuing and. I, I mean, schools all over the place, it's, it's, I mean, like, like Dodger Stadium has one entrance that has. Fourteen lanes that are one directional that are all public right of way. I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that is, I think it's very common. I just don't think the school district is doing anything to help. I mean, I don't mind that we have to consider the massive ingress egress situation at Nordoff when we're designing the road. It'd just be nice if there was some synergy trying to say, hey. Here's what we can do to assist in any way rather than limit what we have, I mean. The, when I first heard about this project, the first concern was Nordoff traffic, I dealt with it my entire existence over there. And I lived behind Nordoff for, you know, ten years in this town. It was a mess. And I'm still really concerned about it. The upper, the northern ingress, you know, to have a separate apron where people are gonna be able to come down my, come down Maricopa Highway, turn right into Nordoff from. Miners Oaks and then go through there, it was the one thing that made sense to me and I am worried. And I, I wanna say too, I'm not saying, by the way, I, I don't think, I, you know, I'm not talking about us going backwards. But if we have the opportunity to demonstrate different options to the public. And then come up with a final design where we make it permanent. I don't understand why we would even consider not wanting to demonstrate another option. I mean, what, what's the fear of that? That people might like it more, isn't that what we'd wanna hear back? Or we can, we can pick and choose and see, I, I, some of these questions I think are best answered and, and, uh, um. It, it was brought up at the beginning that now we have, you know, boots on the ground, we have real data from what's going on. I don't mean we need to do this today, but if we're talking about extending this whole thing till Nordoff comes back, potentially next fall. Cause I don't think there's any, anybody has any realistic idea that that's gonna happen before at earliest next fall. We're gonna get to the summer, there's not gonna be any school, then. We're just gonna have this one demonstration, this one way for the entire time and not have any. Uh, you know, we're just gonna keep getting the same feedback and get some more data that we got now. And, and I do agree though that it does, we, we did have reduction in speed, but if you look, it's like thirty-seven to thirty-three miles an hour, it's not.
That's, no, it's speeding, fifty-eight percent decline in speeding, that's where the, that's where the danger is speeding. Fifty-eight percent decline is very significant.
Wasn't quite that, it might have been, I mean, percentage wise, but the, if you look at what the average speed was, I didn't see it being that.
It's the, over forty, over forty declined by over, over fifty percent, that's the danger, exceeding the speed limit.
I think it's the northbound was like thirty-seven to thirty-three miles an hour.
That's the average. Reduction in speeding, that's going to speed limit. The, uh, reduction in speeding going over forty was fifty-eight percent.
It's big, it's big, Randy.
So the interesting part about going backwards. Is you start from the premise that, um, something existed. We never had bike lanes, Bill. So I don't know how we'd be going backwards, we're putting something in so that we could see how it affects. You know, the outcome of what we're trying to achieve here. Um, I'm not in complete disagreement that a single lane is slowing things down. But it, you know, it slows things down, that's what I, you heard me, it does, I, I understand that. Um, I don't know if it slows it down to the degree of safety that you're all thinking about.
That's just what the data says, Randy.
Well, when I get out of my car downtown. And the downtown traffic is probably twenty, twenty-five. You know what? I'm gonna look as I get out of my car and I feel safe. When I took my truck and parked it next to the Meadows. And tried getting out of my car door and they were going thirty-five miles an hour. Totally different, different world, different space. Um, I even went there and took my wife's car there, we went and, you know, I wanted. We went and, you know, I wanted to experience, to experience this. Now, my wife's car wasn't nearly as bad because I could move over further. So, um, you know, I hear these concerns about speed and I'm not, you know, you know, I don't think anyone's saying that's not a concern. What we're saying is the community doesn't like this class four look. And personally, I don't know if it fits any better than the four lane look. Okay, but sixty years when it was put in, those four lanes weren't put in in one night in in the dark of night with no public input or no public, you know, say. And what we're trying to do now is is create the same environment. We want to change what we have. Here's the options, yet the only option that we want to do is one. And there were four options presented to the community. Now, we're all in agreement that option A, which is as is, we're not in agreement with. So what's stopping us if we have the funding to actually look at other alternative ways of providing bike lanes to this community on that corridor? So listen, I'm not, I'm not naive, I can read the writing on the wall. I see how the vote's going to go. But you're not going to help yourselves out in this community unless you give the community what they'd like to see. And that's alternatives to providing bike lanes to this community. And right now, we've, the only alternative we're giving them is a class four. And they haven't seen anything else. And I just think that we should open ourselves up and if we can provide that.
Susan?
I I should mention that we had at least two hundred written comments. And of that, sixty six were opposed to the project. They want to go back to the four lanes. Hundred and twenty eight people, almost double, were in support of the project as is. And six were neutral, they just had concerns. They were basically in support, I think. And I think, I I think the reason there's some impression that the majority of people don't like this is because those that don't like it have been organized by the safe Maricopa Highway people. Of those sixty six comments opposing, I think about forty were the same four letter. Whereas a hundred and twenty eight in the support were were mostly thoughtful letters describing their fam, you know, from families with with children. But, um, anyway, I I I think, you know, I think the goal should be for us all to work together to make the existing lane reductions safe. And the, and if, and we can always go back to four lanes. But I have serious doubt that if we go to Caltrans and we go back to this, that that Caltrans will allows such a change back. I think if we go back, to me, it's going backwards. And and your comment about the public approving the four lanes fifty years ago, I I I questioned that because my understanding is that the public was opposed to it. It was the city manager who was in favor of it. And he quit the next day when the public present, you know, when, when the state, uh, what's the word, acquiesced to the public. They had a petition with three thousand signatures. You know, but that's a whole.
It sure stopped them, huh? So, so again, I don't, I personally don't want to get into this personally tit for tat. And the other part of this is, I'm not going to question anyone's signature or anyone's, um, how they, you know, communicate to us as a public entity. You know, that that's not in question. What's in, what's in question is that we have a divided community over this and that we're trying to find some common ground to move this forward. It isn't going to get moved forward by stuffing one idea down people's throat. It just isn't going to happen. And in fact, I've actually had people ask me, why haven't you put this to a vote? If this means this much to this community and to these, and into some of the the people that are adamant about this class four, why don't they put it to a vote? Well, I'm not going to waste money on that. But I think as a, as a council, we can listen and that we can come up to some, um, common alley in how to solve this problem and how to better our community. But, um, that remains to be seen and and so let's vote.
Yeah, let's vote.
I have one other thing to say. I we, if, if, and the idea, nobody is trying to to change what the reality is. And the reality is that there's a lot of people that don't like this. And it's not because they're organized. And it's not because that they are just angry at this council or they, just because they're on Facebook. And these are friends of mine, these are people I've known for thirty plus years who I've known forever, who have come up to me and given me a lot of reasons why their opinion that we have to respect is that they don't like it. So this is not simply an angry couple of people. And breaking down the numbers over and over again about what the public comments are is trying to mislead everyone into what's really going on. We've seen the survey data, we've gotten plenty of comments. It's, look on Facebook, look on Open, uh, Nextdoor. These places are not full of people who are just rioting for no reason. And some of the ideas they have and complaints they have are completely legitimate. I, Randy, I think you said it. I'm not saying we have the perfect design, we clearly don't. And I'm not saying we even know what the next one would be perfect. But the idea that we have money in our pocket to change it and be able to give them an opportunity to see something else, whether that is reducing the lane or putting it back or whatever, I'm not going to be afraid of what Caltrans is willing to do. I know Caltrans wants us to get it right. It's a demonstration project. Why would we not demonstrate more options if we have the option to do that? That makes no sense to me, especially where the community is this divided. Because maybe changing something and giving the public a chance to look at it might give us a better idea and try and bring people together on it. But nobody's saying we give up on a lane reduction. But it doesn't mean we give up on doing anything besides this design. You're giving up on that. Anybody doesn't want to even consider saying we're giving up, we have, we have gotten it so right, we're not willing to consider anything else. And that I don't think is appropriate. And clearly, the public, from community members to people outside our city limits, agree that this is not a perfect design and they're clamoring for something else that they might be able to support.
And there's modifications in this motion.
Yes, there are.
Yeah, kind of.
Are we ready for, to vote? Uh, Gail, you take the roll, please.
Does someone read back, read, read back what the motion was?
Yes. And it's on page five. And it's number one. Continue, uh, my motion is to continue with the current demonstration project design with minor modifications in to the design as described in attachment C. This approach has already been designed and reviewed with Caltrans and is the default approach and budget. Staff expects this approach, here's the key, to provide the greatest benefits to bicycle and pedestrian safety to safety and traffic calming. And the addition was, uh, to have staff come back. Um, what's the, uh, help me out?
The feasibility analysis is my suggestion.
Yeah, feasibility analysis of extending the two-way bike lane on the Nordoff side. And this is with the understanding that at some point we're going to address the intersection and the issues as you get off, you know, off of that area. This is all that's before us tonight.
Okay, thank you, Suzie.
Sorry if I went too far, yeah.
All right, uh, Gail, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney? Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
No.
Thank you, everybody. Um, thanks for participating.
Can I make a, another?
Greg's just raised.
I, I was wondering if it's okay, inappropriate. Is it feasible, is it feasible with our current, with the new motion, with the new application that was just the grant, the grant that was just approved? Is it built in there, Mr. Grant and Mr. Vega, that there will be some study of enhanced safety for downtown pedestrian crossings? Or do we need to have a motion to that effect for direction?
I'd like to answer that if I can, uh, that we do have, uh, in the grant money, we had redesigned of Maricopa Highway funding allocated. We also, we had sixty thousand dollars allocated to that. We had eighteen thousand dollars for public outreach. So those are the two funds that support, uh, additional design effort, but that was really focused on Maricopa Highway.
I'm talking about the, the clearly, the clear need to address the safety of pedestrian crossings, especially at night on Ojai Avenue downtown.
So I don't.
Do you need a motion for direction on that or is that built into any of this additional funding?
I think our issue, issue is we don't have funding allocated for that.
We have, we have no funding to look at the issue of 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 a clear problem with visibility in our downtown pedestrian crossings right now?
We could, we could use, I mean, the grant funding does not, uh, you know, address that, but we could use something like measure C or other funding.
There, there is no measure C funding.
No, no, we need some.
Randy, let me, can I just follow up one more, please? Privilege, uh, and that is, uh, there is, of course, the possibility of reallocation because it is part of the project area, right? From the overall grant funding. And I'll just give one example. If it's really expensive to put some, a lot of trees in or things like that, that that's permissible to do some reallocations to address the pedestrian safety problem downtown. Is I, am I incorrect in that?
Uh, that's correct. And I can also investigate, the TDA funding is more flexible in the controls from BCTC. We might be able to request a simple reallocation, essentially pulling some funding from, you know, construction towards those kind of studies you're talking about.
I, I just, would, would, do, do we need a motion for staff to look at the options for the pedestrian crossing issue downtown? Sorry, Randy, I, I, that's it for me.
And James was trying to talk too.
Uh, well, I, I, I would suggest, um, I think the idea of re, reprioritizing and reallocating the improvements on, uh, Ojai Avenue, I think is, is a good way to look at that. And I would suggest, uh, a motion, uh, giving us direction to, to uh, explore that and then bring back options for that priority.
I mean, for example, reducing curb extensions so we can get better safety on pedestrian crossings.
Extensions, landscaping, yeah, there's a few things we can do.
Aren't there a bunch of crosswalks in the plan that are prioritized? I, I mean, there was a crosswalk on every intersection on Ojai Avenue, I think, in the, but they were priority two, three. I mean, Greg, I'm not trying to be, you know, I'm not trying to exaggerate, but there were quite a few. And, um, I, I mean, Bill, I think, I think they're already built into the plan, they're just not prioritized to have funding is what you're really saying. If we pull something out, can we put the money into that?
Right.
I, I think we've known that forever, we just aren't really on the Ojai Avenue section. But I don't think it would take a motion. We have the ability to change this whenever we talk about this again. And it's our, you know, reprioritizing something, I think, is still a, an option.
Yeah, we're planning, we are planning to bring, uh, towards the end of the demonstration project, we're planning to bring the Ojai Avenue portion back to set the priorities. So, so we can, we can, um, we can explore this and plan to bring it back at that time.
And and looking at things like maybe triggered lighting and stuff that really.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I, and for what it's worth, I totally agree. I mean, I think, I think a, a curb bulb out in downtown is not nearly as pedestrian safety, other issues, as nicely crosswalks, especially when we get back to full capacity.
Right.
And you know, the hub and the restaurants and all that, it's, you know, the one in the center of the arcade and the one in front of a Topa Brewery are both, you know, could, they, they could both, you know, anything we could.
We need to find a way to aesthetically, in an aesthetically pleasing way, really light up people that are crossing in the middle of downtown, I think.
So.
Yeah, Randy.
So again, I, I, I this is the, this is the problem I've had with this whole ATP or the answers that we get from our public works director. And I totally, then, sorry, Greg, I just lost faith in you. Was, someone needs to show me in this ATP contract that denies the right of council to redirect funding to ATP guided projects. So if you're saying that we've got two point three million dollars for the Ojai Avenue and that we don't have the right to reallocate funds from that two point three million dollars to look at other options that are available, I need to see that. And maybe, um, maybe we all need to better understand it. Because I think you're wrong. Um, and I would like you to clearly show us, tell us, put it in writing. Um, because that's the only way I'm going to trust it anymore. Um, that we can't do what we're asking to do. So I just, um, I, I, I'm, I'm serious about this. I need it in writing or show me in the, in the, in the ATP guidelines that does, that restricts council from utilizing this funds or these funds for the betterment of our community and why we can't direct how those funds are used. Someone's got to show me that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do, we'll do that, we'll explore it and we will provide a, you know, a written report on what we can substitute and what prioritization options we have.
Thank you, James, I appreciate that.
If I could clarify, the issue I'm talking about is not that we can't do it. What I'm saying is that we very carefully came up with a concept plan. And then we advertised a request for proposals from a consultant. And we were very clear in that, that it would follow the concept plan. So the consultant wasn't going to spin their wheels and chase a design and then redesign in another direction. So they didn't design streetlights downtown. I would think if you would allocate approximately, I don't know if it's ten or twenty thousand dollars, they could provide that study now. We'd have a better feel for the concept and cost and so on. And then same thing for Maricopa Highway, we very carefully went through all the options for what types of bike lanes would be proposed. And it was carefully considered and chosen by council with the understanding that we're going to direct the consultant to design it. So we're tell, if we tell a consultant to go redesign this, uh, it costs money. That was requested in the grant, so we did request sixty thousand dollars to do that as well as some public outreach. But we didn't request any money to redesign downtown Ojai. So when we, we see that ATP money for three hundred twenty thousand dollars, we had a consultant contract that did the concept and they've gone significantly into that design. They're in between the sixty and ninety five percent. So if we just, we can't just have that consultant under the exact same cost go through and redesign. That's a significant effort, we'd have to provide funding for that redesign effort.
All right, well, Greg, you and I will solve that, we'll, we'll be and we'll resolve.
We'll also think it's out.
No, I'm glad, glad, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm glad Greg explained it that way. But I'll, I'll, I'm just going to take it back to what Bill said and it's pretty simple. Um, if we removed, uh, a hundred trees that cost, um, six thousand five hundred dollars apiece, we could redirect sixty five thousand dollars to wherever we wanted to within the ATP guidelines.
Right.
The other thing is the additional funding that just came in through ATP has not necessarily been allocated to any specific area of this. So again, I'm not saying to go to Alta and say, do it. What I would approach Alta is say, what would it cost to do it? Then come back to council and say, this is the discussion we had and these are the costs you're looking at and this is where we could find the funding to do it.
And I think that, uh, this understanding there as well that the funding we requested is exactly to fill the gap between the cost estimate we looked at tonight versus the previous funding we had. So it's to fill that gap, it wasn't any money for other purposes. As you say, we can reallocate it absolutely.
And things like curb extensions are very expensive and it's not that expensive to light up a pedestrian crosswalk.
Right.
So somebody could see somebody at night, not hit them.
It'd be expensive, but yeah, I would agree you can do it. You got to provide electricity, food and poles and all that, it takes some time and money, it's not cheap.
Yeah, well, we will, we will review that and prioritize it.
Great, thanks, James. Anything else, James? Okay, all right, well, thank you all for your participation, good to see everybody and.
Thank you, Tony.
Great night, thank you.
Thank you, Tony and Greg, thank you.
Greg.
Tony's in Miami, so, uh, what is it right now, Tony, about, uh, one in the morning gift to you?
One fifteen, yeah.
So wait, Tony, Tony, we're not going to let you off this easy. We are going to send you, uh, something to reimburse us, okay? You're not off the hook.
Okay, all right, Randy. Are you, are you a Buccaneer fan, Tony?
I, I, I am not a football fan, but, um, you know.
Okay.
Thanks, guys, take care.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good night.